The time is 6:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order. First item is closed session. A closed session of the Board will now be held on matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is now 6:00 PM. There we go. The time is now 7:00 PM. We'll now reconvene into open session. Our first item, I want to thank you for joining us tonight, but as a reminder, the meetings of the Board are open to the public, but are not a meeting of the public. UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meets monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take actions from recommendations of the Superintendent. And please remember, there are students and other guests present. To main decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. With that, our first item, Pledge of Allegiance. No color guard tonight?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing. Please join me in a moment prayer. Thank you. You're seated. Okay, our next item on the agenda are commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
I would love to. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. In tonight's inspiring moment, we will learn more about the Gold Fight Win campaign, which brings awareness to the fight against pediatric cancer.
A lot of families don't realize the hardship that having a child with cancer brings upon a family in itself. We weren't aware of how hard it is. I mean, you hear of cancer in children, but you don't really understand until you live it. The more awareness there is for people to understand and support these children, the better it will be for them while they're going through the hardships of being in the hospital nonstop. Or some kids are in there for years. So the more awareness that can take place, the better it will be to help them out.
Our first event was in 2018, but since that time in 2018, we've raised right around $200,000. And that's important for everyone to really understand because that money goes to helping families whose kids are fighting pediatric cancer, and it also goes towards finding a cure and research, which is just critical because childhood cancer doesn't get a lot of funding. And so, UMBLE ISD makes a big difference with its support of Gold Fight Win that way.
So, I think the cool thing about Gold Fight Win is that we have three pillars. So it's awareness first, then education, then fundraising. So the fact that we've been able to raise all this money is really just icing on the cake. I mean, we're thrilled. Each of us in our own nonprofits is thrilled to see more money coming in so that we can put that towards research or helping families that a child has cancer. But really, the main goals are awareness and education, and it's grown so much over the years.
On my four years in Phillies, we've always been super involved in Go Gold and seeing how we can get the student body and the community involved. It's just so amazing being able to show our support to these kids at the pediatric hospitals, like nationwide too. It's not just in Houston.
I absolutely love seeing the students and the kids get involved in their own unique ways, right? We've seen all kinds of different things happen across grade levels, across schools. And the thing that's so cool about it is that it's often student-led, which is really, really cool to see.
It's important that, you know, the kids that are young, the cheerleaders, everybody that's participating, that they understand what some of their peers or children that are younger than them go through. And then being able to do that, it brings a lot of joy to us.
Quite often, kids that are battling cancer are isolated. You know, they're away from their peers a lot in the hospital and, you know, getting treatment and whatnot. So to be able to see them uplifted and celebrated in this way is pretty special.
My favorite part this year, I was selected by my team, and there were three other Phillies that got selected too. And we got to spend the day at the hospital. There were some other Kingwood people involved, football players, band members, and cheerleaders. And we got to go down to the hospital, set up some games and activities, and just hang out with the kids for like four hours, give them some joy that day, give them something to do. And it meant a lot to me and just seeing how positive they were, even though they were fighting that battle. It had such a big impact on me and meant so much to me, and I'm so glad I got to do that.
And the impact that it had on the kids who were there that day, because fighting cancer is tough. There's nothing exciting going on. You're sitting in a hospital, just waiting for the treatment to be over. And so for our kids, the UMBLE ISD kids, to go down there and just laugh a little, talk with the kids, let them kind of forget what they're going through, it was incredible.
Every year, we see the students of UMBLE ISD interacting with these patients and families, just like the regular people, just being compassionate to them, being kind to them, and really looking outside their own bubble and thinking about other people. And I just think that's one of the best lessons that has come out of this.
You know, watching those kids walk hand in hand with the football players out to midfield for that coin toss, it's just a very special time. It always warms my heart tremendously.
I am the mother of a childhood cancer survivor, and he's been out on the field. When he was five years old, he was standing there, holding the hand of the captain of the football team, and he walked out on the field with him. And he was just over the moon to be hanging out with these big guys and to be able to hang out with these cool high school guys. And so it's really cool for the young kids to get that experience.
Oh, it was amazing. I mean, I think he's still trying to understand what's going on. He's only four, but he's enjoying every moment of it, being able to be out there next to some of these tall, six-foot, big old muscle guys that are playing football. And he loves watching football himself, so I'm pretty sure that the experience for him was amazing.
It is absolutely my pleasure to recognize our three community partners for Gold Fight Win. Speaking tonight are Amber Bender of Addy's Faith Foundation, Scott Arnt of L3 Foundation, and Michelle Wilson with Mothers Against Cancer. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan, and thank you for the support that you've given September in Gold Fight Win over these last few years. It's truly made a difference. Josh, wow, just wow, that was fantastic. And everything Jerry said about that video, this is the first time that we saw it, just outstanding, so thank you for that. You heard what awareness and education and fundraising. And through those three things, we believe we can make a difference. Because Gold Fight Win is all about kids. It's about the kids that are fighting cancer. It's about their siblings who are supporting their brother or their sister, but they still have their lives. It's about their friends. Maybe they're not getting to see their buddy quite as much as what they used to, or maybe not even at all. And it's about their classmates, who all they see is an empty chair in the classroom, and they don't really understand why. So when we started with this concept, it was all of these different things that we were trying to accomplish. And UMBLE ISD, the support that you've provided, we couldn't be more thankful to all of you for that. And I just wanted to share one other piece with you. I say it's about the kids. You all know this, if you're parents and educators, kids do amazing things. And they can do them when we're there to support them, and frankly, when we just get out of their way, right? And let them do wonderful things. So two cool things about Gold Fight Win that I want to share with you tonight. The first is the name, Gold Fight Win. You saw Alyssa Studdard up on the screen, Kingwood Philly. The Phillies came up with that name six years ago. It wasn't us. They told us what they thought would resonate. The second piece are these shirts. So the one that I'm wearing, this was the first year design, and what Amber and Michelle have on is this year's design. We've had five different designs, two of them heads and shoulders above the other ones. And it's these two, coincidentally, designed by kids, by UMBLE ISD kids. So apparently, we need to stay out of the t-shirt design business, right? That's our big takeaway on that. And we're going to continue to do that because we put it out to the kids. They give us designs, and it just works. And last thing that I just want to say is Jerry Monbaron, Donnie Bowdrin, Trey Kramer, Jamie Mount, and Rusty Odom, I think Rusty's in another room. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you. Gold Fight Win would not be what it is today without the support that you've provided, helping us navigate things. And you've made it truly special. We turned September gold. So thank you all very much for letting us be here tonight.
Thank you. Okay. We're very proud of that work that has bloomed and blossomed in UMBLE ISD. UMBLE ISD is a very giving philanthropic community, and Gold Fight Win is just one way. Now, as Ms. Parker is showing, this month, we absolutely do Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and you're going to see everything turn pink, so.
Pink shirt?
Oh, pink shirt, good job. Yep, there's a pink tie, yep. I missed that memo. But, anyway, I am very proud of the philanthropic work in this district and the way that the district worked so hard to give back to others. Let's see, tonight is one of my favorite nights because it's special. We're going to honor our 22, or 23, 24 Elementary Teachers of the Year. So you probably remember that we did the secondary teachers. Before that, we have a surprise for our District Teacher of the Year, and, catch this, and I'm just going to brag for a little bit, the second time in just the last few years, the Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year. I would like to welcome Region Four Executive Director, Dr. Rodney Watson, to the podium for a very special presentation.
So first of all, I thank you, Dr. Scarfo, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Fagan. It's truly a pleasure for me to be here with you all this evening to celebrate not only one of your best teachers, but our best regional teacher as well, and that's none other than Mrs. Susan Mitchell. It's not often that we, let's go ahead and give her a round of applause. So it's not often that we really get to celebrate teachers, and I know that, you know, as I get started, it's a pleasure for me to really be able to interact with you, Dr. Fagan, and your leadership team for definitely continuing to foster a culture of excellence. And as we think of the Teacher of the Year process, especially for the regional level, there were hundreds of teachers that were up for this award. And not only do we recognize teachers around the region, but Ms. Mitchell has the opportunity as a librarian at the elementary level to impact the entire campus. And so at this time, we have a few things from the Regional Service Center and one of our sponsors from ODP. If you could come up? She said it was a surprise, right? So on behalf of Region Four and ODP Solutions, we have a few gifts for you. First of all, just to say thank you for your commitment, your dedication to all of the students that you serve at your elementary school, but being a true representative of Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year. So with that being said, we have a few goodies in here for you, which also includes a $500 gift card from HEB, some books, a.
I love books.
You know you would.
That's my thing.
Some books, a portfolio planner. If you could take this. We also have your very own laptop. And this laptop, you don't have to give back to technology. And then on behalf of ODP Solutions, we know that you're not always sitting. When you do, you're only there for a short period of time. They donated your own office chair.
Oh, nice. Are you going to fish me in it?
That's perfect. You're done for a second. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Watson, for being here and for celebrating the Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year. We're very proud. You might remember Joe Penites was the second, yep, see? UMBLE ISD, we're at the competition. Okay. UMBLE ISD's application for funding under the Texas Natural Gas Foundation Supplemental Environmental Projects Program was approved. In conjunction with the Texas PTA and the Texas Natural Gas Foundation, funds were provided to purchase two propane-powered buses to add to the UMBLE ISD fleet. Ms. Jerry Monbaron, Chief Community Engagement Officer, is here to tell us more about this grant.
Thank you. So did you know that propane fuel costs are 70% per gallon less than that of diesel? So because of the cost savings and the lowered emissions of propane, JP Byrd, UMBLE ISD's Director of Transportation, strives to operate 30% of our route buses as propane-powered. But school buses, propane-powered or not, are very expensive. So JP does a phenomenal job of seeking out funding opportunities to keep our fleet running efficiently and effectively. And so to that note, as Dr. Fagan said, we have recently received two propane school buses. And so we're honored tonight to have three Texas PTA Board members with us. And I would now like to call up Adrian Hicks, Georgia Strickland, and Dominique Harvey. And Adrian is going to say a few words about this grant award.
Good evening, and thank you all so much for having us. My name is Adrian Hicks. This is Dominique Harvey and Georgia Strickland. We are here as Texas PTA Board members on behalf of nearly half a million Texas PTA members, the UMBLE ISD Council of PTAs, and the 20 campus PTAs in UMBLE ISD. We are very excited to present to you $218,000 for two new propane school buses as part of the school bus, as the clean school bus program. Thank you so much, Mr. Byrd, for completing the application and seeing the process through to the end. We know you must be excited to get these two new buses on the road and add them to your fleet. We are proud to share the PTA values of collaboration and commitment with UMBLE's Transportation Department. These values speak directly to the commitment to transporting 15,000 students safely and reliably throughout the district on a daily basis. Your dedication to the success and the health of UMBLE students and the community at large has not gone unnoticed. With that said, I'd like to invite every trustee and the entire UMBLE community in attendance today to join me in making every child's potential a reality by joining one or more PTA in the UMBLE ISD, in a UMBLE ISD school. Parents and family members right here in your community are working hard every day to achieve our shared mission, and you can join, I'm sorry, and you can support their efforts by becoming a PTA member. Visit joinPTA.org and find UMBLE ISD in the drop-down menu to learn more. It was such an honor to share this moment with you. Thank you so much.
Joining us up front for picture is JP Byrd, thank you very much, and also Candy Toda. She is our President of our UMBLE ISD Council of PTAs. So come on up here, Candy, and be a part of the picture for us.
That's great, because JP is always wanting more buses, and they're big budget items. So thank you for the Texas PTA for buying UMBLE ISD two buses. Excellent. Our staff members go above and beyond. Ms. Jerry Monbaron is going to come back to introduce our superstaffers.
Yes, I do, okay. So, UMBLE ISD employees go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping UMBLE ISD great. So we select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work, and a drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at a school board meeting. This month's superstaffer award is sponsored by James Dickerson of DC Realty in Texas. And Mr. Dickerson, you can come on up. Let me tell you about James. So he's not only the sponsor for this month's awards, but he's also the co-coordinator of the watchdog program at Oak Forest Elementary. So we appreciate all of your volunteer and sponsorship efforts in UMBLE ISD. So join me in thanking Mr. Dickerson for sponsoring. So being honored as the elementary superstaffer tonight is the physical education coach at Jack Fields Elementary, Dominic Milton. Dominic, come on up. Joining Dominic is going to be his principal, Melissa Christensen. So let me tell you a little bit about Dominic. Coach Dominic goes above and beyond for the students and staff at Jack Fields. He plans a variety of activities that support our students' physical fitness levels, encourages each student to pit forth effort to improve their skills. He has high expectations for all of his students, and because they love him so much, they all work hard for him. He also offers fitness activities for the staff, has hosted after-school yoga, and even invites the staff to participate in fitness grand with the students. He's a wonderful role model for everyone, and Jack Fields Elementary is very lucky to have him. Congratulations, Dominic. Being honored as our secondary superstaffer tonight is the librarian for Riverwood Middle School, Misty Oliver. Come on up, Misty. And joining Misty is her principal, Matthew Roser. Come on up, Matthew. Misty is an amazing librarian who is so helpful, patient, and enthusiastic with the students. She creates fun and engaging lessons for them and goes above and beyond to make sure students at all learning levels have the resources they need to succeed. She is creative and jumps right in to help, whether it be quickly coding a new iRobot lesson and training the students on how to use the robots, or researching the best resources for her students, or helping new teachers learn the ins and outs of schoolology. Misty is a valuable asset to our campus, and we are very grateful to have her. Being honored as the super-support staffer tonight is the HVAC supervisor for Maintenance and Operations, Chris Johnson. And his supervisor, Lane Bowman, is also here, so come on up, Lane. So Chris's knowledge of all aspects of HVAC is top-notch. He works diligently as the HVAC supervisor to lead a team that ensures their air conditioning is working properly for all students and staff. Chris models the quote, "Work hard in silence, let your success be your noise." His dedication is very much appreciated, and I will just add, after the summer we have had with all the high temperatures, we're very grateful for people who know how to work on air conditioning. So thank you very much, Chris.
All right. Last but definitely not least, I'm going to ask Ms. Kristi Erb, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, and Ms. Stephanie Davis, Director of Elementary Education, to come to the podium and introduce you to our incredible Elementary Teachers of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. It's truly an honor to recognize the 23, 24 Elementary Teachers of the Year. From Atascacete Springs, Christina Doyle. Autumn Creek Elementary, Demetria Claybon. Bear Branch Elementary, Chandra Grabowski. Centennial Elementary, Trishonda Smith. Deerwood Elementary, Rochelle Thomas. Eagle Springs Elementary, Brianna Edwards. Elm Grove Elementary, Holly Jackson. Ms. Jackson is unable to be with us tonight, however, we will present her award at a later time. Fall Creek Elementary, Tiffany Rhodey. Foster Elementary, Amanda Batzel. Ms. Batzel is also unable to be in attendance tonight, but we will also get her award to her. Green Tree Elementary, Laura Smith. Groves Elementary, Susan Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell is also being honored as a district finalist, the district teacher of the year, and the Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year. Hidden Hollow Elementary, Lisa Sherrill. UMBLE Elementary, Abigail Daley. Jack Fields Elementary, Nikita Chambers. And now I would like to welcome Ms. Stephanie Davis to the podium to introduce the rest of our amazing 2324 Elementary Teachers of the Year. Thank you, Ms. Erb. I'm honored for the opportunity to welcome the remaining Teacher of the Year. Lakeland Elementary, Sonia Ojeda. Lakeshore Elementary, Jennifer Ross. Maple Brook Elementary, Lisa Cruz. North Bend Elementary, Randy Cormier. Ms. Cormier is also being honored as a district finalist. She is unable to be with us tonight. We will present her award at a later time. Oak Forest Elementary, Mary Canavan. Oaks Elementary, Susan Adele Messiah. Park Lakes Elementary, Lucy Hernandez. Pine Forest Elementary, Jennifer Aiken. Ms. Aiken is also being honored as a district finalist. Ridge Creek Elementary, Caitlin Ripley. River Pines Elementary, Abigail Ignacio. Shadow Forest, Rachel Rice. All right. Summerwood Elementary, Angel Lewis. Timbers Elementary, Catherine Hoffman. Whispering Pines, Megan Schultz. Ms. Schultz is unable to be here with us tonight, but we'll get her award to her. Willow Creek, Paul Touchstone. Mr. Touchstone is also being honored as a district finalist. Woodland Hills Elementary, Amy Hayes. Thank you and congratulations to all of our Elementary Teachers of the Year.
Do you want to help?
Okay, well, thank you for that. And our next item is questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any matters that they would like to discuss with us. The next item, the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues, and tonight because of the number of speakers we have, it will be no longer than one and a half minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. Copies of our district policies on participation in meetings are available on the UMBLE ISD website. And what I'm going to do, a little bit different than we've done in the past, I'm going to ask the first three speakers to come up, and Ms. Mount has kept two seats there, just to make, go a little quicker, I think, rather than wait each time. So the first three people, Dr. Yvonne De Martinez, Linda Barton, and Dan Depew, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and two of you can wait, and those chairs I have hold for, held for you. You may begin.
Never put politics ahead of the children. I am asking the board to continue with the building of the Student Health Center and keep the contract in its original form. When we have a mother on the news stating that her child was not able to participate in sports because she could not afford the $20 fee, believe her. But that's not the problem or why we are here today. We are here because almost a third of the board wants to close the clinic because of oral contraceptives and other blurred information. Please keep all of the clinic's programs because in Matthew, Chapter 19, verse 20, "She bled for twenty years, and when she touched the hem of his garment, she was healed." We all know that oral contraceptives today actually assist preteens and teenagers with irregular menstrual cycles, cramps, acne, endometriosis, pain, and PMS. If this medication works so that the girls don't have to miss school two to five times per month due to their cycle, then why deprive them of proper medical care? Because they're poor? Anxiety, depression, and suicidal tendencies have increased in students elementary through high school, and having access to mental health care is difficult even for those who have good insurance. Most of us here teach, preach, and scream abstinence to our children the same way it was done to us, yet family planning involves more than just preventing pregnancy. Family planning teaches us how to live on our own when we graduate from high school. So if we say that we want all of our students to be productive citizens, then please know that it is easier to teach and assist with preventive medicine and care rather than deal with long-term consequences.
Ms. Barton?
Thank you very much, Board of Trustees. My name is Linda Barton, and I'm a retired nurse but was a nurse for 43 years. My three grandchildren go to school here at UMBLE, and my daughter is a teacher at UMBLE. Students provided with access to proper health care in turn provide better results in their prospective schools. But there is a notion, met with ire, of those who question the efficacy, necessity, moral implication of providing students with access to something so basic as a general checkup, simply out of disdain for two of the words in the proposal, "family planning." It is evident that the benefits of school-based health care effectively outweigh any possible negatives that may or may not truly exist. Memorial Hermann has explicitly stated that they do not perform gender-affirming care for anybody under the age of 18, and they are bound by the state laws. Likewise, said services are optional and are able to be controlled by the guardian and/or parent of the students in question. As a result of this, the arrangement simply allows for those who would otherwise go untreated, lacking in respect for their health, to receive actual care. As such, it is with a firm and empathetic heart that I implore those on the board to consider going forward with the implementation of the school health clinic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Mr. Depew?
I have letters, copies for the board. I'll just leave them here, and thank you. I wanted to come tonight just to continue the discussion in this forum, because this is the only forum that we have. I am here with Halt Construction. I did send emailed letters out last week, and these are copies of those letters today, and I'm still asking, and Halt is still asking, to urge the board to move forward towards mediation regarding the school district projects. A minute and a half is not enough time for us to fully address these issues, but one of the reasons why I wanted to come in person again is because comments that were made by the superintendent and members of the board during their public comments back lacked the true accuracy of information, the total reflection of what's going on with the project and the delays that continue on to this day. To say that another contractor had to come in to finish Halt's work is completely inaccurate in the fact that the work that the other contractor was brought to do had to do with design flaws and missing work that the city of UMBLE and the local jurisdictions required for fire and safety measures. These were issues that the school district was well aware of, and anybody on the board who's being briefed about what's going on with the project would know these things. There are also several change orders and change directives that are being issued to Halt and then being clawed back because it's being, it's being told that there's no funding for those. So we're being told, well, go ahead and move forward with work, and here's the directive for it, or then take the directive back because there's no funding for it. These issues need to be looked at by the board. I certainly don't want to do it in this forum, but I'm asking you again, let's please sit down together as adults and address these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Depew. Now, may I ask Jerry Davis, Tracy Shannon, and Beth Guy to please come up?
Do we start?
Yes.
Okay. Community, board members, and administration, I come to you tonight as a kid who ate at Jojo's, a kid that worked at President and First Lady, a kid that worked in DeBrook Mall at the Chick-fil-A, and as a former elected official. I served with your council, as a council member, your former colleague Dave Martin for almost 10 years in the city of Houston. I sat in those seats, listened to constituents that came up, week after week, and spoke on the same topic. Sometimes I didn't pay close attention, but many times I had to listen because they weren't coming back-to-back, back-to-back for no reason. And tonight, I'm here for us, this is one of those times, because I'm here because there's a reason. I'm asking this body tonight, trust but verify. Each one of you bring different perspective on the issues that come before the body, the community, some business, finance, and construction. I love what trustee Grabowski has on his website. Ending the problem starts with recognizing the problem. We now have almost a $10 million problem. Ask more questions of the administration. Use our QR code. For me, it wasn't going, it wasn't fun going against the administration. But trust but verify. Keep it about the kids, keep it about the teachers, keep it about the community, keep homes, right? There's one more keep. Keep the lawyers out, so the district can spend those funds on kids, teachers, and community. Each one of you spoke in one of your surveys about being fiscally sound for the district. No waste. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Shannon?
Memorial Hermann Health Physicians Provided Puberty Blockers, Hormones, and Surgeries for Purpose of Gender Transition to Minors. They still do sex change procedures on adults. Their professional ethics are questionable. It may have been legal until recently to sterilize minors and cut off their healthy body parts, but it was never right. What other unsound, novel experiments does Memorial Hermann engage in? If Dr. Frankenstein ran a health clinic, would you let him treat your kids just because he was legally banned from one barbaric procedure? We should not partner with such an entity. Doing so leaves the school to gender clinic pipeline wide open. This clinic will harm nearby practices that also accept Medicaid and provide the same care, many of which are minority-owned and operated. This board should stop acting like a rubber stamp for everything Dr. Fagan brings before it. Academic performance, like, is affected by many things, like sleep schedules and parents' reading to their children. But will Dr. Fagan now have a program that sends someone to our houses to read to our children and tuck them into bed at night?
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Ms. Gard?
Well, guys, I'm back again, because yet again, you've lost your way as a board, okay? I'm going to call your attention to this mission statement that says your job is to make partnerships between parents and the school district and to educate the children. You don't do a good job of that, and now you're going to go put your nose in a freaking healthcare healthcare system? I don't see how that's a valid, useful way to help anybody. Some of these people got up and talked about Planned Parenthood, somebody said gender studies. All of that is true, that these things are involved in all of this, whether you realize that or not. However, what you're going to do is you're going to put this board or this district in jeopardy of legal and financial difficulties, because your policy, the policy here in Texas is juxtaposed of the national policy. You're setting up a system where we're all going to end up at Supreme Court. And who's going to pay for that? Me and the rest of these people? You guys need to act with fiscal responsibility, educate children, and get out of the healthcare business. That's all I have to say. Have a good night. I'll be back next month to tell you you lost your way again.
Thank you, Ms. Guard. Now, may I ask Ms. Gracie DeLeon, Stacy Smith, and Richard Stoissis to please come up?
Hello. I am a parent to an UMBLE ISD student and graduate. I have been in the medical field for over 20 years, and during this time, I've made relationships with numerous providers. I'm here to talk about Memorial Hermann. I've been told that this clinic will provide access for children who are not able to get health care. I find the statement to be inconsistent with what I know. There are several clinics in this area that provide the same services that Memorial Hermann would be offering. They collect based off the patient income. Programs are available such as Medicaid and the Gold Card. Each student could be given a list of clinics that are available in the area at the beginning of the school year. Memorial Hermann's own clinics are short-staffed. Physicians and ancillary staff are constantly leaving due to poor management and reasonable expectations. They also have their own restrictive health insurance, which members are not allowed to see anyone outside of their network. Their providers are financially incentivized by the volume of patients they see. It's not about the time that is spent with the patient, it's about how many they see in a day, and their providers are bonused accordingly. I am not doing, I am not denying this would be beneficial for our students and our staff, but a more cost-effective way of doing this would be to offer telehealth. New KNE ISD is already offering it to their teachers and staff. Specialists could be consulted via telehealth in the right situation, including mental, the much-needed behavioral health portion. Parents can join via telehealth, and cameras can be used to assist with the physician's exams. Building this clinic is not the best use of UMBLE ISD's money, when we already have established services and telehealth as an option. Please vote no to this proposal or delay this vote. The information I've provided today is based...
Thank you, Ms. DeLeon. Stacy Smith?
Hello. I want to thank the school board for their collaboration with community health partners to bring accessible health care to students in our community. And I'd especially like to thank the Board members that took the time to answer community questions and help overcome misinformation on parental consent and services offered. This clinic may not serve any of my five kids, but I support supporting kids. Access to health care shouldn't be a zero-sum issue. We, and especially children, should all have access to it regardless of location, insurance, transportation, or finances. The already-approved clinic can only serve to fill a much-needed gap for many students, and it will not take away from existing health care facilities in the area. The students and families that utilize these services will not harm you or your ideals in the process. It is funded by Memorial Hermann and won't affect our funding. Let's stop attacking good things like the health clinic and work together to protect our public school district funding by asking our legislators to oppose vouchers by any name and vote no on Prop 4 and support educators by voting yes on nine. I stand with public education and UMBLE ISD. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Smith. Mr. Stoissis?
UMBLE ISD is in significant academic decline since 2016. The STAR data demonstrating decline is extensive and irrefutable. The district should not be taking on new responsibilities like building a clinic while it is failing at its core mission. Numbers speak for themselves. Using MEAT standards, our reading scores have fallen from 8% above state average in 2016 to just 1% above in 2022. Math is even worse. The same period, we've fallen from 6% above state to 4% below. The decline is best summarized at Public School Review. Beginning in 2016, just five years, we went from 74th percentile among Texas districts to 58th percentile. Viewed in this context, the administration's determination to build a clinic at UMBLE High School represents a loss of focus on its core mission, education. The same loss of focus can be seen in the building of campus coffee bars, a city park, eco-playgrounds, and of course, the portrait of a graduate with its list of 22 personality traits is perhaps the ultimate example. Unbelievably, academic proficiency is not a part of this list. Now, there's 21 other clinics in this area that take Medicaid, low-fee and no-fee services. You're subsidizing Memorial Hermann to take business away from these clinics, some of which are minority-owned. Your job is not to help Memorial Hermann create a virtual child Medicare monopoly in this area. Your job is to educate students. Do your job.
Thank you, Mr. Stoissis. And now, may I ask Ms. Suzy Helms, Ms. Deanie Allen, and Justin Laurie to please come up?
Thank you all. My name is Suzy Helms, and I'm here opposing the Memorial Hermann student facility. And since most of the speakers before me have already addressed a lot of the points I was going to address with regard to how many health clinics we have in the area for our students, there's also the Texas Child Health Access Through Telemedicine and the Texas Child Mental Health Care Consortium that UMBLE ISD already contracts with to provide mental health services. And only, over the last three years, only 1.5% of the UMBLE ISD school population took advantage of this. And so why do we need another mental health facility if we've already got, if we've already contracted with the company? The rest of mine is just going to read to you some of the clinics that are in the area. Avenue 360 Health and Wellness, Beyond Family Medicine, Cavalry Medical Clinic, David Carpenter Get Well Clinic, Harris County Public Health, Integrity Family Healthcare, MD Kids Pediatric Meth and Medical Group, Michelle Legalli, Northeast Pediatrics Associate, Northeast Primary Care, Pediatric Primary, Quality First Health, Texas Family Health, Village Medical, UMBLE Family Health. Here are some of the therapists. Jesus Tames, Behavioral Solutions of Texas, Joseph Brown, Renewing the Mind, Clear Hope Counseling, Resilient Mind Counseling, Total Wellness Assessment and Counseling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. Ms. Allen?
I am Deanie Allen, Reading Specialist and Dyslexia Specialist. Do you know that if you can't read, you have a higher chance of dropping out, going to jail, using drugs, and teen pregnancy? Yes, the two words that caught my eye were teen pregnancy. If you can't read, you have a higher chance of teen pregnancy. So let's look at the scores at UMBLE High School. UMBLE High School 10th grade reading, which is English 2, on the STAR test, 39% of those students failed. Yes, 39% have a higher chance of teen pregnancy. Our curriculum has failed them, and I salute the fact that the district is taking steps to improve our education and our curriculum to address these problems. And I have no doubts that we will do something for our middle schoolers and high schoolers. Parents will have a choice of services at these clinics, and please let parents decide what is the best solution for their family and for their child.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Laurie?
When you vote on whether to allow Memorial Hermann on campus, keep in mind both the precedent... Do you want me to start over? Did someone buzz me already? I only got one sentence in.
You've got a fresh clock.
Okay. Can you start the clock again? Okay, I'm looking the wrong way again. I thought they had the clock. Thank you. All right. When you vote on whether to allow Memorial Hermann on campus, keep in mind both the precedent and the unintended consequences upon family businesses. The best analogy is you are inviting Walmart onto your property, subsidizing the costs in a massive way, and then in a year or two, you'll pretend you're stunned as local businesses are bankrupt. Why are you punishing small businesses by you, the district, whom are stealing their clients? Dr. Chukwameka Oragru is a family medicine physician down the road from your clinic. Will you take his clients? What will you say to the pediatric physician, Dr. Latricia McBridge? Will you, the Board, vote to take her clients too? If your business ventures into cradle-to-adulthood, full government control were not enough, you're partnering with a firm who should be fired and banned by their moral turpitude. They're proud, and I mean proud, history. A mutilation of minors should be more than enough as a breach of trust and decency to sever all ties. Anything that happens in the future with this endeavor, this partnership, this business opportunity, you are responsible as ones who vote for it. I never want to see your pretend shock when truthful allegations of misconduct are reported in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Laurie. And now, I'd like to ask Candy, Ms. Candy Todash, Suzy Citron, and Ms. Natalie Carter to please come up.
Gender, identity, and family planning. Those two phrases have our clinic on the chopping block. Hello, I'm a Title I parent that lives in the UMBLE High School feeder pattern. My husband and I have six children, aged 29 to 12. God gave every human free will, including our little humans. We hope and pray that they choose... No, go back. We endeavor to inculcate our values and morals, and we hope and pray that they choose to stick with those values and morals. However, if they don't, and as a parent, we then decide that we want them to have family planning, then that's a parent's choice. Okay, I lost my spot. While everyone has a right to feel some kind of way about absolutely everything, we also have the right to choose, as long as we possibly can, the medical services our little humans receive. And if a child is asking a medical professional for advice about gender identity, accurate medical information would be preferable, not Dr. Google. Family planning is with parent consent. Our parents have the right to choose. Parents may be needing birth control for their daughters due to medical difficulties, severe cramping, and/or heavy menstruation. We have that with our autistic 16-year-old daughter. Again, this is parent consent. Moral preferences aside, because everyone's morals are different and a choice, as a Title I parent, I know for a fact that our families need the clinic. It would be a dis...
Thank you, Ms. Todash. Next, Ms. Susan Citron?
Hello, my name is Susan Centrum, and I'm a proud graduate of Kingwood High School, class of '87. My daughter graduated last year from KHS and is thriving at one of the top-ranked art schools in the country, Savannah College of Art and Design. At midterms, she has straight A's. She didn't get there all by herself, but sadly to say, it wasn't KHS and it wasn't UMBLE ISD that prepared her for her success. It was her parents, a psychiatrist, and her hard work and determination to leave Kingwood High School. You see, my daughter would have been one of these medical clinic's favorite clients, the mental health student. We have all heard, sure, go see the clinic. We'll bus you there. We'll let your parents know. They can show up if they want. We will treat you. Trust us. The constant bullying and combined social media telling her she needs to be this, that, or the other was too much. Her anxiety went through the roof, and she started thinking about a plan, a plan that no parent should ever want to know about, but dang sure, if they get to this clinic, they better be known, because it was the worst day of my family's life. Fast forward, I called her last night and asked if I can tell her story after informing her of today's meeting.
Ms. Carter?
Everyone, I'm Natalie Carter, a mother of three current UMBLE ISD students. I stand before you today as a champion for this clinic. This is an invaluable resource that we can have, and we have to recognize that health care and education are two inseparable entities that ensure student success. The UMBLE ISD Student Health Clinic is more than a facility. It is a beacon of hope, breaking barriers and extending a lifeline to those in need. It promises accessible health care to every student regardless of their ability to pay. Sadly, certain individuals have radical beliefs that allowed them to blur their perception of the clinic, diluting its services, vilifying the individuals like myself that could potentially be the ones providing care to these students. Most of all, these detractors of the clinic do not face hardship, nor would they use these services that the clinic provide, prioritizing and idolizing their political ideation prior to the welfare of the students of our district. As trustees, you serve the entire district, not in part, in whole. I implore you to do what is right for us.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. And now, may I ask Tanisha Vincent, Ms. Erin Green, and Ms. Eleanor Paris? I hope I say that right.
Good evening to each of you. I am Tanisha Vincent, and today I stand here on behalf of Loving Houston, where I unbelievably serve as the newly-appointed district coordinator for UMBLE ISD. Our vision is to see every school in greater Houston and surrounding areas, which includes UMBLE, with a committed church partner. The model is simple: one church committing to love one school. With this model, it helps Loving Houston's mission, which is advancing community transformation, by helping churches serve local schools. So I do want to thank Dr. Fagan, the Board, Ms. Marilyn, and others involved in granting Loving Houston the opportunity to serve in this district. This wonderful door has allowed us to create over 30 church-school partnerships where Summerwood, Lakeland, and Hidden Hollow Elementary, Summer Creek High School, and Ross Sterling Middle School have been impacted, to name a few. This may have been done through mentoring, providing snacks for kids in our underprivileged areas over the weekend so they can have snacks. Teacher support and even appreciation are a few areas or needs that have been aided through these partnerships. Loving Houston trains, inspires, equips, and provides resources to every church that commits to a partner with the school, because we want to send you healthy help. We understand that each individual school may have different needs, and we simply desire to help meet those needs and be a bridge to help get the help that is needed by connecting a church where our kids can thrive in the classroom academically, but also gain skills on how to cope and make good decisions, knowing that there is a community of people who care. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Ms. Green?
Education is to have students learn how to read well, write well, do math, and learn history and science. UMBLE ISD is not holding to this mission, and now they want to open a clinic. And I'm not blaming the teachers. They're not at fault. The clinic is unnecessary and will take business away from clients already established in the area, clinics already established in the area. Furthermore, how often will parental consent? Once at the beginning of the year, with a blanket acceptance of all treatments, or every time a child is seen by the doctor? Quote from the agreement, "The child possesses, under state and federal law, the right to consent to the underlying treatment." Really? A child, not the parent? Also, records can be kept from the parents if a medical professional determines that access would cause reasonable harm. A father in Maine discovered his daughter was prescribed Zolo for depression without his knowledge. She got this at the clinic. This is going all over the, over the United States, guys. Parents, if you give your rights away, it is harder to get them back. Be careful what you wish for. It just might backfire in your face.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Memorial Hermann is seeking the help of this board in order to solve a problem of overcrowded ERs in our community. A free healthcare clinic is cost-effective and provides benefits to the entire community. Our children can be diagnosed and treated early, which means they will be less likely to spread illness to other students, teachers, and families without putting additional stress on our healthcare system. Terminating this contract for political agenda infringes on my parental rights. Terminating this contract for political agenda directly hurts the students of this district. I'm also going to reference that mission statement. It says, "Complex thinkers and responsible global citizens," and I challenge you to be both of those. You need to go forward with this program and protect all of the students.
Thank you, Ms. Porras. And next, may I ask Ms. Audrey Dever, Ms. Tracy Chilla, and Ms. Jennifer Matthews to please come up, if they are all here. Ms. Dever, you may start.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Fagan. Last month, I stood here and spoke out against this administration's desire to keep using the failed reading strategy called "three-queuing." Immediately after my testimony from this podium, several parents and teachers reached out to me to say thank you. Now, I'd like to say thank you to the board for doing the right thing. They also verified the administration's defense of three-queuing was not the truth. Right now, some schools have more than half of entire grades reading below grade level. That is a crime. You know, if a child can't read, they cannot learn. You are in the business of education, not healthcare. The single most important thing you can do to bring children out of poverty is to teach them to read and read well. We've had six years of decline. We need to turn this around. The whole community needs to be behind this. You will take full responsibility when parents complain about wrong healthcare decisions because you voted for it. When parents complain, consent will be a non-issue. You will be to blame, not Memorial Hermann. Parents need to understand what proxy access is. It's taking the parent out of the equation. You are getting in between the parent and the child. That mission statement should say "educate." Your core mission is to educate. It is not healthcare. Right now, Memorial Hermann is being investigated.
Thanks, Ms. Dever. Ms. Chilla?
Hello. In November of 2022, Attorney General Ken Paxton investigated Memorial Hermann Hospital due to complaints about their published policy, which states, "Proxy access cannot be provided to parents of children between the ages of 13 and 17." If a proxy relationship was established for a minor, the parent will no longer be able to see the child's health information in their everyday Well account when the child is between the ages of 13 and 17. The Attorney General has said this policy violates state law and harms parents and children. A pattern is emerging of Umbel ISD partnering with entities that think it's appropriate to cut parents out of the picture. Considering the test scores in our district, until education is a priority, nothing else should be. And I ask the board and the administration, where is the accountability for our low test scores that we have? Every third-grade child deserves to read at a grade level. It's life-changing if they can't read in third grade. Please, please, let's educate our children and make that the focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chilla. Ms. Matthews?
Hello. I'm here speaking as a concerned parent and as a taxpayer in Umbel ISD, and I just want to know who's asking the parents what our children need. These are our kids. You're making decisions with our tax dollars, and you all are elected by us. This kind of a project is a major commitment for the district that raises complex and serious issues. It should, at the very least, involve the parents and taxpayers of this district and be a conversation, not just an action item on an agenda. Many more specifics should be addressed, and many more details should be provided in venues such as town halls and forums where parents and taxpayers can voice their concerns and opinions. Instead, we have another instance where all you want is to just hurry up and vote through a major decision based on good intentions, minimal details, and many promises that will be difficult to monitor or enforce, thus absolving you all of any real accountability. Most importantly, how can we possibly trust you all since you continually choose to pursue distractions while our children are left to suffer academically? Meetings over the last few years have become a circus in many instances and a routine exercise in frivolous spending of time and money at the very least. To refresh your memory, there were multiple meetings over many months trying to remove a specific board member, a $1 million retention pond project that is now $4 million and still needs modification, an attempt to pass a waiver to get around a state law for a failed educational method the district wanted to continue to use, and voting on spending taxpayer money to join a lawsuit against the TEA instead of taking responsibility and action to deal with failing schools and inadequate test scores. You know what parents in this district want? They want to have to stop taking their kids to tutoring. Ask around.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. And now may I ask Dr. Sergio Lera, Mr. Todd Litten, and Amanda Edwards?
Okay, I'm just waiting for the go button here. Okay, good afternoon, Honorable Trustees and Madam Superintendent. I'm Dr. Sergio Lera. I'm president of Greater Houston-Lulac. You know, I've spent 30 years in public education, and you know what's important is that I've learned that you may have the best schools, the best teacher, the best superintendent, best administration, but if a child is not learning, there is a problem, and many times they're called invisible barriers. And sometimes it's poverty, sometimes it's transportation, sometimes it's food, sometimes it's lack of medical health services. I've worked in two schools that had a memorial health clinic, and they had a very, very useful purpose on campus, and they literally helped so many students. Yes, there are many out there, community clinics, but it takes three to four months to get a visitation, and we know that health costs is crushing the middle-class community, but more so the poor community that are mostly African-Americans, Latinos, and poor whites also affected by this. But you were elected, you were elected to improve student outcomes. Someone said, "Who's going to be held accountable for student outcomes?" Of course, the superintendent, that is her role, and board members, you hold her accountable on student outcome. But let's focus on what is preventing the growth of, the improvement of student outcome. Invisible barriers, and a memorial health clinic helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lera. Ms. Litten?
Good evening. I want to thank the board and the superintendent for your service to our kids and to our community. It's been great tonight to see everything that has gone forward with our teachers and such, and I want to just remind you about your mission, how you're here to help each child develop intellectually, artistically, emotionally, physically, and socially, and urge you to see that supporting the Memorial Hermann Clinic is well-aligned with that mission. This will help our kids learn better. This will help our community thrive more. When kids have access to healthcare right there for them, they're able, we know they're not able to learn if they're hungry, they're not able to learn if they're sick either. We need to have kids, we've heard nurses testify too, about how like we can have early preventative services for our kids that will, again, help them thrive, help the teachers be healthier, help their families be healthier, help the community as a whole be healthier. It is well within your purview and is well-aligned with your mission at Umbel ISD to help all of our children thrive and our community thrive as a whole too, to support the Memorial Hermann Clinic in Umbel High School. And I respect, I thank you again for your service to our community, and I respectfully urge you to pass this in support of Memorial Hermann at Umbel High School. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Litten. Ms. Edwards, and before you start, may I ask Ms. Jackson, she's the last person on the list, Jocelyn Jackson, if she might come up and be in the bullpen?
Greetings to the board. I want to say thank you and to all of you who have been civically engaged this evening. My name is Amanda Edwards. I'm a former elected official here to advocate on behalf of making sure that we are increasing access to healthcare to our kids. When I was growing up, my father was diagnosed with something called multiple myeloma when I was 10 years old, and I learned firsthand about the critical importance of providing access to healthcare. And in that journey, of course, I learned that it's not about politics, it can't be just about positions, it has to be about saving lives. And there are many kids whose only access to healthcare will be access to healthcare through the school-based clinic. As was stated by Dr. Lera, access to transportation often serves as barriers. Poverty is complicated, and its roots are very tangled, and so we've got to think about making sure that everybody in Umbel ISD, in terms of our students, has the opportunity not just to go to school and go into a classroom, but to really thrive in that classroom. And part of thriving in the classroom is having holistic, comprehensive healthcare and wellness, as well as an ability to learn. So I encourage you all, please, 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 take the politics out of this discussion and think about the overall outcomes for the students. Texas is ranked the worst in the nation as it relates to healthcare access. Let us make-
Thanks, Ms. Edwards. Ms. Jackson?
Do I need to press the button? Okay, there it is. Okay. Good evening. I'm Jocelyn Jackson. I'm a parent and a resident in Fall Creek, and I'm urgently asking the board to please change the reading curriculum from Fontas and Pennell, Lucy Calkins' units of study, to an evidence-based structured literacy reading curriculum based on the science of reading. Fontas and Pennell negatively impact students' ability to successfully learn to read, as it simply teaches students to guess words and rely on pictures and context clues. Too many students are falling behind with this instruction and would benefit from more of a phonics-based approach. Ed reports found that the Fontas and Pennell program did not meet expectations for text quality or alignment to standards. Both Fontas and Pennell and units of study receive the lowest ratings from ed reports given to K-2 curricula for ELA and are among the three lowest for ELA in grades 3 through 8. Public schools, I'm sorry, public schools in Umbel ISD have an average reading proficiency score of 44%, and also based on the TAPR reports, that score was 47% in 2021, and 54% of students who met the star reading grade level. According to the board's vision, ultimately, we see schools that prepare students for many paths that empower them with skills to successfully live in a rapidly changing world. Well, without the foundation and skill to read successfully, the vision will be-
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, and I just want to thank all the speakers who were here, and I appreciate the audience and everybody maintaining great decorum. I really appreciate that. Turn off. Next are comments by individual board members. Why don't I start? Ms. Lamont Dixon, any comments?
Yes, I just want to congratulate first and foremost our Teachers of the Year. Also, you know, when we're talking about childhood cancer, it's always a moving evening for me when we're discussing Gold Fight Win, and I'm thankful that our district is supportive of that effort. I would also like to thank all of the speakers who spoke tonight, and also thankful that decorum was maintained. I agree with you in that effort, Mr. Scarfo. And that is it for me for now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lamont Dixon. Ms. Sitten, I'll go back.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. A couple things real quick, just talking about Gold Fight Win. Just to kind of reiterate, it's very dear to my heart as well. I can remember back in 2018 when Scott came to me and said, "We'd love to take this on a bigger scale." They'd been raising money in the community and around the country, and he said, "Do you think we can work out something with Umbel ISD to where we can partner together?" And so I went to Dr. Fagan after that conversation, and she immediately pulled up University of Iowa and what they do with their pediatric hospital overlooking their stadium. So we set up a meeting with the L3 Foundation, with Addie's Faith, and all their supporters. They came in. I'll never forget, they were blown away when we started talking about how we can take this movement and turn the entire month of September gold like we do for breast cancer awareness in that pink month. So the growth of that event and the way it has blossomed from one conversation and then a superintendent that was willing to think out of the box and think about how we can make this special, it's great to be in on the ground floor of that. I want to congratulate all of our Teachers of the Year. And then two things on our personnel items tonight. Larkin LaSour, who's been heading up our CTE programs, he is leaving to go into private industry, and he will be sorely missed, so I wanted to make sure that we said that. And then last but not least, he hasn't left yet, but the cat's out of the bag. 34 years in education, 15 years in Umbel ISD, the unofficial mayor of Summer Creek. Trey, you're going to be missed, buddy. Trey Kramer's announced his retirement at the conclusion of this school year, so I wanted to make sure we acknowledged that tonight, and we'll talk more about it later. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Sitten. Mr. Robowski?
Well, good evening, everyone. Two things I'm going to talk about. One was, last school board meeting, we had a young gentleman come forward named Christian Dwaran, and he talked that he wanted to be a coach, but we didn't have a coaching path for a young man at 16 years old, a junior in high school. What could he do? Sitting in the room that night because he was here, Mr. Roser, the principal at Creekwood Middle School, his teacher, Middle School Teacher of the Year was here, so that's why he was here. And Mr. Roser reached out and contacted young Christian Dwaran, who now is serving an internship on a coaching path at Riverwood Middle School. So for those watching online and for the parents and grandparents that are out there, have courage like Christian Dwaran. Come to this meeting. Come tell us what you want, because we are here for you. That is what we do. That is our number-one mission, to educate you, and we've fulfilled that dream. So thank you, Mr. Roser, and thank you, Kristen, for the courage. And to the 3,200-plus amazing, hard-working teachers that we have in this district, tonight we honored 30 of them as Teachers of the Year. That is, for those that may not know, an award you get by your peers. Just a teacher's vote on Teachers of the Year. That's a truly honorable way to get an award. And I want to be able to go home tonight and not have to negotiate to get into my locked house, because I wouldn't be allowed to get in it, without mentioning that my beautiful bride, who is sitting over there, is the Bear Branch Elementary School Teacher of the Year. So congratulations one more time, sir. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, so to all the teachers that were nominated- Dwaran, who now is serving an internship on a coaching path at Riverwood Middle School. So, for those watching online, and for the parents and grandparents that are out there, have courage like Christian Dwaran. Come to this meeting. Come tell us what you want, because we are here for you. That is what we do. That is our number-one mission, to educate you. And we've fulfilled that dream. So, thank you, Mr. Roser. And thank you, Kristen, for the courage. And to the 3,200-plus amazing, hard-working teachers that we have in this district, tonight we honored 30 of them as Teachers of the Year. That is, for those that may not know, an award you get by your peers. Just a teacher's vote on Teachers of the Year. That's a truly honorable way to get an award. And I want to be able to go home tonight and not have to negotiate to get into my locked house, because I wouldn't be allowed to get in it, without mentioning that my beautiful bride, who is sitting over there, is a Bear Branch Elementary School Teacher of the Year. So, congratulations one more time soon. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, so, to all the teachers that were nominated, congratulations. Thank you for your service. To the administration, I'll be brief, because this is seeming like it's going to be a long night. Also, to Roman Carter, where's my buddy at? Hey, it's Roman Carter right there. He's president of the Student Council. This is a young man who, this is why I'm here. This is why we do this. He wants to be president one day. So, to sit through a two- or three-hour meeting, Roman, you can't leave early now, okay, buddy? I know it might be past your bedtime. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchhoff? No? Okay. Ms. Parker?
Well, I just want to thank everybody that came here and expressed their First Amendment right. And we may agree, we may disagree, but I respect and appreciate you coming and being here tonight and sharing your thoughts and feelings very, very much. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. And I guess that leaves me. I just want to also thank all our speakers who came tonight. It's great, as I said, thank you very much for how you conducted yourselves. And also, I'd like to, again, I've got the opportunity to be out there tonight, but all our Teachers of the Year, all the other award recipients, our super staffers, great job. And just thank you so much for being with us every day. And you may think I'm a little strange, but I'm, Mr. Beatty, if you haven't gone and looked, you need to go to the website and look at the Updated, Expanded, New, and Improved Financial Transparency tab on the website. There is more information than you ever want to know, but I'll tell you what, it's great. You need to go and look at that. You'll find out a lot about the district. So, I just wanted to say, I know you guys have been working on it for a while, and so I just want to let everybody know. There's a little commercial there. So, when you have some time, go and take a look at that, because it's great information on the district. Thank you. And Dr. Fagan, you are next.
Thank you. So, I asked Rusty to pop up a slide for me real fast. So, there's been a lot of conversation tonight about test scores. And so, I get this email every now and again, and so, I just simply put together a pretty easy graph of on-grade level in math for the state, on-grade level math for the district, on-grade level reading, and on-grade level for reading for the district. And as you can see, up until COVID, for the most part, the district was pretty flat. Statistically significant ups and downs are really not there. Those are pretty small ups and downs that you're going to see, given the fact that TEA sets the cut scores on an annual basis after they actually get the data. So, our students take the tests with all the other students in the state of Texas. TEA gets the data, and then they actually decide what is approaches. And I think that's another thing that sometimes is misunderstood, is it's very misleading, but Meats is actually not grade level. Approaches on STAR is grade level. And Meats is above grade level, and Masters is multiple levels above grade level. And so, UMBLE ISD data. Now, when you see the COVID gap, which a lot of this information is sometimes misrepresented in graphs that connect the lines, but that's actually not appropriate, because there was no testing in 2020. And so, you have to start over again to have an appropriate and accurate graph. And you can see that UMBLE ISD, like the rest of the state and everyone, is now coming out of a bit of a COVID recovery. And I think it's important to say this, because we do have phenomenal teachers who first and foremost love and care for their students, and get to know them well, and really work hard to engage in assessments that are one-on-one. So, the most powerful assessment that I've ever seen, and I was a high school science teacher, so, but the most powerful literacy assessment I've ever seen was when a student reads to a teacher, and that teacher is able to score that student individually. The least effective reading assessment I've ever seen is a, I won't call its name, but it's an online program where the faster you click answers, the more fluent you are as a student, which has a lot of issues with it. But, so, we've really worked hard to make sure that our students are getting that rich experience of reading to their teachers, so that their teachers can understand exactly what their strengths are and what their challenges are. And then, we can support that teacher in making sure each and every student grows in reading. Our goal is 100% of our students grow in reading one grade level every single year. That doesn't mean they're on grade level, because some of our students come to us multiple years behind. And so, while our goal is always to catch them up, and I just want to mention this too, we have some incredible teachers who are taking on some of the most impacted students in our district. Over 50 of the most impacted classrooms, we have double-staffed with comp ed money. And those teachers work together as a team, which they love, by the way. And in a teacher shortage era, meeting the needs of teachers is just as important as meeting the needs of students. And these teachers work as a team to address the needs of these children in an effort to make leaps and bounds or multiple grade-level progressions in a single year. And we actually celebrated at least three classrooms, if not more of these, two years ago, who did outperform their peers on the STAR, even though they started way behind them. So, UMBLE ISD has made it a concerted effort and personalized approach to make sure every child is growing in reading every single year. We have beginning-of-the-year data, we have middle-of-the-year, and the end-of-the-year data. STAR is one test, one year. The cut scores are changed on an annual basis after TEA receives the information. It's like greyhounds who are chasing a plastic rabbit around the track to some degree. It comes way too late to actually use the data. And our teachers are doing a phenomenal job of connecting with students as they sit there, and then we can support those teachers with strategies to help some of our most impacted students improve. Our dyslexia program has really picked up steam. We've added more support there, as more students than ever are being identified as dyslexic and dysgraphic. These are things that, when I was a teacher, we didn't talk about. Today, we see these learning differences and are able to address them far better than ever before. But we're realistic about the growth. And if there is a student who doesn't grow one year each year, we have an individualized plan for that child. They're not lost in the averages. You know, when you, you can play the game of STAR, and you can do a great job in making sure you have enough students getting this sort of score to get the averages where you need them, or you can care about every single student. And in UMBLE ISD, we care about every single student. We absolutely partner with their parents and their families to provide that information and help them grow in reading. We bring our teachers on. Our reading academies, we're targeted to the needs of our students. So, I just want to emphasize that, you know, there's a lot of conversation, and I welcome it. We, my team meets with everybody. We're happy to talk about anything, anytime. So, we welcome people to come with their concerns, and we will happily work through them. And, but I just think it's important for the staff of UMBLE ISD to celebrate the work that they are doing, and the fact that they're concentrating on the needs of our students, and to show that our data are actually very stable. There is not a huge downward slope across six years, as some people might have perceived or said. It's just simply not there. And we don't have our 23 data yet, because that's a new test that the TEA has sort of clawed back a little bit, because they wanted to reset the growth measures, because they said that COVID was an anomaly, and they didn't want that to have an impact on the data as it's impacted schools, particularly at-risk schools. And one of the things that I was very proud about with this board was that, when we started to look at our initial preliminary data, we noticed that the most highly impacted students and teachers by this new STAR test, it's all online, by the way. So, if you're very proficient with a mouse, and you're very proficient with a computer, it's probably not that big of a deal. But if you don't have a lot of access to that, it actually could be a very big deal. And so, as we started to look at the data, it seemed to us that our at-risk teachers and students were most dramatically impacted by this new test. And those are also the campuses that are eligible for TIA. That's the Teacher Incentive Allotment, a pretty big financial burden for the state of Texas that we certainly hope continues, because we all know the single most important thing we can do for at-risk children is provide them with the highest quality teacher that's available. And we want to continue to draw those kind of teachers to our students who need them the most. We just certainly don't want to tell those teachers that their work is bad or inadequate. So, I think it's important, as we have these open, honest conversations, to make sure that they're based on factual information, which we're always happy to provide, and to support the teachers of UMBLE ISD, who really are phenomenal teachers, who go above and beyond and spend more time getting to know students than anything I've ever seen before. They are committed and dedicated to their campuses. The last thing I wanted to mention is, you know, Holt Construction has come to two different meetings. I'm confused by their presence, because we have agreed to mediation. It's part of the legal process. We're just in the process that the court requires. Holt sued us, not the other way around. And so, we're going through the legal process. Mediation is part of that process. So, it's very perplexing to all of us to see somebody come here and request mediation that has sued us, and we actually have agreed to do that when the time is right. So, that's where we are on Holt Construction and the multipurpose rooms. We'd love to have those done for our students. We'd love to have the trench dug at Pine Forest to show the fire marshal exactly how deep the fire line is, so we can get occupancy there. I don't understand why we're waiting for that. So, in any case, these are some things that I think when we want to talk about, you know, getting up to the facts. These are important things that our conversations are being had, and I just want to make sure that all the folks who are participating in this process, which I love, are receiving the facts on these topics. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Next are actions from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Sitten, may I please have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, next, also from closed session, item B, Student Expulsions. Again, Mr. Sitten, a motion, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move that the board approve the administration's recommendations of student expulsions as presented in closed session with addendum.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Okay, seven zero. Okay, next, now we'll move to our item five, our Consent Agenda. First, item A, Approval of Minutes for the Regular Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, September 12, 2023. Approval of Revised Minutes for Special Board Meeting Held on Tuesday, September 26, 2023. Okay, that's consent. C, Bond Fund Transfers and Amendments. That's consent. D, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments. That's consent. E, Approval of Goods, Professional Services, and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate, or $25,000 individually. That's consent. Item F, 2023-24 Construction and Construction-Related Purchases. That's consent. Item G, Tax Refunds. That's consent. H, Board Authorization of Inter-Local Agreements. Okay, that's consent. Item I, Approval of RFP Number 2021-003-R, Supplies, Equipment, and Services for Students with Disabilities. That's consent. J, Approval of RFP Number 2021-006-R, Educational Service Consultants. That's consent. Item K, Approval of RFP Number 2024-102-22, Software Subscriptions and Web-Based Applications. That's consent. L, Purchasing E-Bidding Software, a Renewal. Okay, that's consent. Item M, Deductive Change Orders. Okay, that's consent. Item N, Architect Selection for Foster Elementary. That's consent. Item O, General Contractor Selection for Middle School 11. That's consent. Item P, Change Order Number 1, Baseball and Softball Synthetic Turf Fields.
Pulled.
All right, that's pulled. Item Q, Instructional Materials Adoption Selection Committee. That's consent. Item R, Data Center Services. That's consent. S, Additional Staff Positions for 2023 to 2024. That's consent. Okay. Mr. Sitten, may I have a motion for what is on the consent agenda, with, I think, one pulled?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A through 5S, with the exception of 5P.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, seven zero. And Mr. Sitten, would you please bring us back to the pulled item?
Yes, item 5P, I move to approve Change Order Number 1, to Increase the Baseball and Softball Synthetic Turf Fields Contract by $232,012, for a total contract amount of $5,451,52.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, have a motion and a second. Ms. Parker, you asked to pull that, so if you'd like to-
Yeah, there was some discussion in the community. So, this is the baseball-softball synthetic turf at Kingwood Park High School. And there is some confusion that some folks think that we're putting the turf over a detention pond. And so, I just wanted Dr. Fagan to clarify that.
So, I'll do my best here, and then Tom can chime in. But, so, we actually did turf, baseball, and softball that passed in the last bond at all of our high schools, and that project came in under budget. But in the process of construction at Kingwood Park High School, there was damage to, it's a detention pond, but they have used it for practice fields in the past. So, there is pretty significant dirt damage, if you will. And so, this, taking a portion of the savings from this project, and using that to smooth out the dirt, and then put in, not grass, but it's not turf. It's, it's grass, but it's- Tom knows the exact grass type. But anyway, I would call it sod. But nonetheless, we are not turfing the detention pond, because if we did, we would not actually get credit for the detention pond, because it, you have to actually add detention when you do turf. So, we are just putting the sod back over the old detention pond, so they can use it as an athletic practice field again, and we're using savings from the turf project to do so. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, now we will move to our action item agenda. We have two items on that. And first on the agenda is consideration of the Memorial Hermann Contract, as was proposed. We had, we held a public hearing on this item in September, at the September 12 meeting. A motion was made at that point to terminate the Memorial Hermann Contract. Ultimately, a motion was made, and a vote taken to table that motion. So, we are now at the point where we have to take that motion off the table to reconsider. So, I must have a motion to remove it from the table. So, do I have a motion to remove that motion from the table?
Still moved.
Okay, now, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, this vote is just to remove the motion. It's not to discuss that motion or anything at this point. Okay? Okay, so, now that that is up for vote, I'll ask all those in favor of removing this motion from the table to raise their hand to show that they want to remove it. Okay, opposed? Okay, six to one. Okay, so, that, that motion- So, that, that motion was to terminate the Memorial Hermann contract. Correct? And, so now, that, that motion is now back on the table. So, we had, the motion was made and it was seconded back in September, or December 12th meeting. So, now I'll open up discussion on the amendment to terminate the Memorial Hermann contract. Ms. Lamont Dixon?
Can we actually hear the motion again in full? That we're discussing?
Okay, I, the amendment that we're discussing was, simply stated, to terminate the Memorial Hermann contract. That's, yeah. Well, I, no, um... There was and there is tonight, right?
I think there, I'm sorry, was it an amendment or was it an original motion? Had there already been a motion made?
Well, yes, there was. There was a motion made and Ms. Parker, I guess it wasn't an amendment, it was another emotion to terminate the contract. So, that's what we have on the...
I do think it's a good idea to read it into the record if we have it from the minutes of the meeting so that the board members know exactly what is being, what is on the table at this time.
Mrs. Martin's pulling it up. Okay.
So, there was the motion by Ms. Parker. She said, "I move to terminate the Memorial Hermann contract."
Can you get the, get the mic in?
So, there was no original, that was the original motion because the administration...
We cannot hear.
Her mic is on. It is on. It's on. Yeah. It's on. Robert, we sent yours on too, just to pick it up.
So, the administration last month did not have a motion, did not recommend one. So, Ms. Parker said, "I move to terminate the Memorial Hermann contract." There was, it was voted, it was the motion by Ms. Parker, then seconded by Mr. Grabowski. But, there was no vote because then they moved to table the item. And that was by Mr. Holmes and then seconded by Mr. Kirchhoff. And everyone voted to table it except for Mr. Sutton.
Ms. Lamont Dixon, does that answer your question about the motion on the table?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And, and just to be clear, we did have a motion on the agenda that we didn't vote on about moving ahead in the temporary quarters for the wellness clinic. So, that's on the, on the agenda tonight, okay?
And what I, and what I understand, and I'm sorry, I'm coming into this a little bit new, so please forgive me. What I understand is you had an agenda item last month
Yes.
to move the clinic to temporary quarters. As y'all were holding the public hearing and considering that agenda item, there was a motion made and seconded to terminate the, the contract. And that is the live motion being debated or up for debate at this time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay, so, any discussion on the motion to terminate the Memorial Hermann contract? Ms. Lamont Dixon, you can go first and then Mrs. Parker.
Okay, I'm just gonna read my notes. So, again, I would like to thank all the parents and concerned citizens for the emails, phone calls, texts, copy meetings, and handwritten cards. And I would like to thank all of the speakers who spoke this evening. Each and every one of your concerns has been taken seriously and is appreciated. In my role as school board trustee, my number one priority has always been to do what is best for students. I want Umbel ISD to have a district standard that ensures excellence for each student we serve. I want us to have the safest district, the best education, as well as the best facilities and best opportunities. And I could go on and on and on. So, tonight, I'm just going to make two points. One, one of our goals set forth by the state is CCMR, College Career and Military Readiness. This clinic would allow our students in health sciences, including pharmacy, tech, EMT, and nursing to do clinical rotations as they earn CTE certification. I do not know how many of you in the room are doctors or nurses or work in the medical field. But this opportunity is similar to a med student being able to work in a teaching hospital. Denying an educational opportunity to our students due to perceived information and things that we would never allow as a district would be a disservice to our students. Just as Mr. Grabowski shared a little bit earlier about Christian having a pathway to coaching. This is a pathway for our health sciences students. Two, as a mother of four children, I believe giving parents the power to make decisions that are best for their families, just like with my four children. Two graduated from Umbel High School in the IB program, one graduated from Kingwood Park, one from Kingwood High. We made the best decision for our children based on what was best for our family. One parent does not have a right to take that power away from another parent. We all get to make the decision about what is best in our homes. Please remember, if the clinic does anything that the board or school district disapproves of, we can cancel the contract when we want to. The clinic offers an educational opportunity for students and it requires parent permission for services. Let me repeat that. The clinic offers an educational opportunity for students and requires parent permission for services. I have volunteered at ER Day for our health sciences students and so has Mr. Scarfo. And having a working clinic in our district would give students firsthand knowledge and real-life experience as they meet their education goals. It also gives them an opportunity to give back to their community, which is an honorable form of stewardship. As a person of faith and compassion and a leader in education, I believe that we should move forward with the clinic and not cancel the contract.
Thank you. You were up first and then Mr. Sitten, Mrs. Parker? Okay, Mr. Sitten, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have any prepared notes. I'll just repeat what I said last month. And the reason why I voted no to table it is, we vote, this is nothing new. This is not a new contract. We voted unanimously as a board two years ago to approve this. And, nothing has changed in two years, other than, we, there's, there's some conversation going on this time and there wasn't two years ago. And, you know, six, uh, no, five of the, five of the sitting board members up here were on the board that voted for that two years ago. So, my position hadn't changed. It's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Well, two years ago, the concept that was given to us was a clinic to help children, which we all, of course, want the best quality care for every single child. But, it was a little confusing. The item was not an action item nor a consent item. It was an attachment line item, zero-based budget item. And so, we didn't have these meaningful discussions two years ago. We didn't. And, so, we're having them now. And, you know, I, I want to clarify for the audience, Mr. Sitten is absolutely correct. We voted, although there were some hiccups in the road, we didn't have the public hearing as we should have and it wasn't perfect, but we've done that now. And, as we sit here right now, the clinic has passed with the family planning language, all of that good stuff. And, anyway, but, right now, what we're doing is, we're talking about the family planning. And, when we delve deeply into the, the language, and this was the most recent, the most recent email that went out today, and it said, let's see, I'm sorry, y'all. That family planning would include, I had it pulled up and I just lost it. It would include basically birth control, the Depo-Provera shot, the implant birth control, up to even the Plan B birth control pill would be available on the Turner complex. And so, that's what we're talking about now and that's why last meeting I moved to terminate the contract because I take pause with those items. And I'm glad that we're having these conversations now and being open and transparent with the public. But that's all I have for now.
Mr. Kirchhoff?
I don't have any prepared notes. It's just me speaking from the heart. I did vote for it the first time. And, I'm just gonna remind everybody here who I am, why I'm gonna vote the way I'm gonna vote. I was raised in the city when I was 16 years old. My dad pulled up in a Buick Century, brand new. My brother said, "Oh, gosh, Dad stole the car." No, we found out he got this tremendous promotion and we moved back outside Philadelphia in the suburbs. We went from two wood stoves for 16 years through the winters. My brother and I split the wood, never had to lift weights. And when we were 16 years old, we move. And we're getting our milk delivered, steaks delivered. We're getting everything. 16 years in the city, we thought it was great that we had a garden in the backyard. Pasta night was on Wednesday night. It was great. Those kids where that clinic's gonna maybe go, why do, is 80% of those kids go to school hungry? Why? We're feeding them. We send them home with food. Yellow, white, black, whatever, they're all the same. They're all, they need, they need healthcare. And, you can tell me there's 22, there's 30, you can tell me there's 50 of them around. You can tell me there's whatever. Think of the kids. Think of those kids coming to school hungry. You think they're gonna go home to that house that might have one parent or grandparents or the guardian? And they're gonna go in there and say, "I gotta, hey, I got runny nose. I've got an earache. I've got asthma." We have to think about all the kids. When I ran, I ran for all the kids, each and every one of them. Yes, I do value the million and a half people that emailed me, called me, found my phone. I talk to anybody that wants to talk to me, which was the better half of the last five days. We're gonna disagree. We are and we should and we should hash it out. But we've got to push forward, things that help the kids. There, there is no greater, no greater thing than sitting here. I, four years ago, would have never thought I'd be sitting up here. My kids all went through the high schools, or went through the schools. And, I've been here since 1999. I know the school district. Yes, we all have challenges. We need, our kids do need to be better at math, better at reading. But I think the administration is doing the best job they can to push it forward. And the seven of us up here, even though we do disagree, and that's okay. We're governing. We just had 30 of the best teachers in the school district in front of us. Let's give them healthy kids to teach.
Mr. Grabowski?
Well, good evening. Like Mr. Kirchhoff said, many emails, too many to answer. Phone calls, text messages, smoke signals. It came. And thank you, because we're glad you're engaged. And to those online, thank you, if you're not here tonight. Mr. Kirchhoff is right. We're gonna disagree, because I disagree. And I'll give you why. I'm basically against anything extraneous to the core mission of Umbel ISD. And that core mission is educating our children. If a clinic is needed, which I believe it is, then have the county build it right next to the high school. That's why you pay property taxes. Have the city of Umbel build it. The municipality of Umbel should build that clinic. It should be their core responsibility for building and overseeing and the expenses, not our districts. We are in the education business, not the medical business. Yes, the children, healthy children will do better. I understand that. But not at the expense of our school district. Currently, Squatty Lions and 21 others districts that work off of Medicaid, CHIP, or even free are in the surrounding area of Umbel ISD. If we need 41, then build 41. If we need to improve the quality, then improve the quality. But that is a county, again, or city of Umbel responsibility, not Umbel ISD. Why are we, why is the district being asked to shoulder a county or municipality's responsibility? I have great concerns with some of the parents, what they said and what I read too, on how Memorial Hermann does very cleverly minimize parental oversight. That is a very big one. I believe if parents raise a child, a school should educate them. Rusty, can you put that slide back up that Dr. Fagan put earlier with the graph for the scores? I'm gonna show you what we should be emphasizing. It's gonna be hard for the people in the room to see what I'm gonna say or to see as I describe this slide. Can you focus the camera on the slide so when people want to go home, they can see it archived? Okay, so the people online are seeing the camera. I mean, are seeing the slide. Thank you. In 2016, we were ranked in the 74th percentile. We heard that tonight. We are now in the 58th as of 2022 and 2023's numbers are not out yet. Somebody did their homework and put very accurate numbers together and came up and said that tonight. If we are failing at our core objective, we shouldn't give more responsibility to the administration. We should try to figure out how to help the administration do their job better. We have 50, nearly 50 campuses in Umbel ISD, nearly 50. We have outstanding staff, principals, auxiliary personnel, and nearly 3,200 amazing, hard-working teachers in our district. You know, I tend to get mischaracterized up here. So, I want to make sure something is very clear. We have over 3,200 hard-working, amazing teachers in this district. I want that to be clear. But now, look at the slide. It's gonna be hard to see, but if you look at the year 2016, and you can do this when you get home. If you look at the state of Texas in blue and the difference between the state of Texas and Umbel ISD in red, you will see we are six points above the state average in 2016.
Mr. Scarfo, I think we're... I, I understand. I was gonna say, we need to bring it back to, I'm sorry, we need to bring it back to the discussion at hand. I know it's... We need to bring it back to the discussion at hand, I know it's loosely tied, but we're kinda going too far.
Well, it's an example of how we're not doing our core mission and why I'm opposed to the clinic.
Okay, well, I...
Can I, 30 seconds, I'll be done with this slide. I just want to point out where we are now in 2022.
Okay, well, I believe that you have.
No, I haven't, I've only said 2016.
Okay.
I'll be done in 30 seconds. In 2022, the red is UMBLE ISD, the blue is the state. You will see, we are two to three points below state average. The decline is on that graph, that is what the district produced. We went from six positive to minus two or minus three, depending how you interpret the data. The problem is the scale on the left side. This problem is district-wide. 50 great campuses, 3,200 outstanding teachers. We don't need a clinic to distract from our primary core mission that we're not doing as well as we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Grabowski. Ms. Parker, I think, let me, Mrs. Parker hasn't spoken yet.
Yes, she did.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify a couple of things.
Yeah, go ahead, come back.
So, just to clarify a couple, a couple issues here. Back in 2021, we received an email, the entire board did, talking about the clinic. And in that email was the entire contract. So it wasn't hidden in a line item, we all received it well in advance to read it. So that was a little mischaracterized. And then it goes forward and says, the, where's it at, about the... It says that prior to construction, a public hearing should be, should be had, and that will come closer to time of construction. So the fact that we didn't have a hearing then was not something we should have done. It was something that was in this email that said we will do when it gets closer to construction. So just to clarify those, those two issues, we didn't do anything wrong back then. Every board member that was here got the contract well in advance, and the wording in that contract is identically the same as the wording in the contract that we have in front of us tonight. So.
I'm not sure your point, Mr. Sitten, about that?
In, in Ms. Parker's comments, she said that we didn't have a public hearing and we should have, number one. And then the other point was that we didn't have a lot of communication back and forth. But she, and then she said it was in an agenda item as a separate line item, just stuck in there, in the agenda. But yet, the board that voted on it had a full week to review the contract, talked to the administration to get it. And so it was alluding to the fact that maybe we didn't have all the information when we voted, but we did, and it alluded to the fact that we should have had a public hearing at that time, which we didn't, and that, that was false. So just corrections.
Well, okay, but I think Ms. Parker was getting to the point that it was, it was a, it was one item in a consent agenda item, that even though we might have seen that contract, I think that was the point you were getting to, that it still was a consent agenda item, and it was listed amongst other items in that CH, I think that was CH grouping, or is it CV, I forget which group, okay. And Ms. Balding, at that time, would we have, since we were bringing health services to, or adding or changing health services to the district, would we have been required then also to have had a public meeting? I know we've done it now, a public hearing, so we've kinda corrected that, but I thought we would have, we should have done it then too.
It would have been my recommendation at the time, knowing what I know now, and I wasn't sitting in this seat in 2021 and don't have all the facts, to, if we were doing it today, to have a public hearing.
Sure, okay.
Like you did last month.
And we had the public hearing, so we caught up, so that's, that's a good thing, okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Scarfo, that was the recommendation, the recommendation to delay the hearing was from our current counsel at the time, in that email.
And Mr. Scarfo, that makes sense if you weren't going to implement the clinic at that time. And from what I'm understanding, catching up, the clinic hasn't been implemented.
Right. Not yet.
It's not built, okay. So the public hearing would be appropriate at the time you built the clinic, or consider building the clinic.
All right, any other discussion, Mr. Holmes, I haven't called on you, so.
Wanted to ask a question of Dr. Fagan. Dr. Fagan, how much is Memorial Hermann donating towards the build-out of this clinic?
Their grant from their foundation is, I believe, 3.9 million, about 4 million. Yep.
It's roughly 4 million?
The Northeast Hospital Authority donated about 3.8, 3.9 million for the first five years of the operation of the clinic.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. In correlation to that, how much is UMBLE ISD possibly being asked to help in offsetting that?
Well, we don't pay for any of the actual services or any of the medical equipment. Our only obligation would be space.
Okay, so there's just a lot of misinformation out there? Because I've heard it several times in our public comments, which I really appreciate all of the public comments that were made about the clinic. But you just heard that Memorial Hermann is donating from their foundation, roughly $4 million for the build-out of this clinic. So I just wanted to just address that. And I know this, let me just go into this real quick, because this is nuanced, and this is, we have two, what it seems like, two completely opposing sides to this, but this district is used to this. Because if we talk about the pandemic and the choice to bring our children back to school or not, whether to wear a mask or not, we left that in the parents' hands. That's what this district does. If you want to speed it up a little more, we have the controversy over library books. And we had parents who were diametrically opposed to some books, whereas some were not. But what did this district do? We left it in the parents' hands. You're not gonna sit here and tell me on this other nuanced issue, which in my opinion is not very nuanced, that we're gonna go away from what we've shown a pattern to do, which is leave that in the parents' hands. So when I tabled this vote, I was hoping that it would create this type of discussion in our community, which it has. But my opinion has never wavered from when I voted on it two years ago. I'm absolutely in favor of the clinic. But I want to say this, right? I believe it's un-American to continue to bring up how many clinics are in the area, 21 or 22. If I'm a parent, I want to be able to take my child wherever I feel like it, because I'm the parent. And it's un-American. I can have a McDonald's down the street, but if I want to go down to Sugar Land, it's my right to do that. So what I'm getting at is, it's the parents' choice. And that's called enterprise. And so we're partnering with an entity that can provide total services to our children. So if you're saying that we only address the academic performance of our child and negate the health and wellness of our child, I believe we're missing out on that core mission. That's where I'm going. That's why I'm in favor, and I'm in favor of the clinic with no other additional language added or taken away.
Okay, any other discussion?
Can I show one slide?
Okay, yes.
I just thought, I just wanted, we've been talking about this a lot, so I just thought that it would be instructive to see a lot of these comments about this, and so I, I had put this together. So this is, on average, across this feeder pattern, it's 81% of the students are free and reduced lunch. And so then you can see the campuses that would be impacted by the clinic, what their free and reduced lunch percentages are, including Lakeland and North Bend that are over 90%. And so if you've ever taught in a campus, a 90-plus campus, it's different. Because you love those kids, you want them to have everything they need to be successful in life, and their parents are doing everything they can. So what teachers try to do is everything else. And so this is, this is part of the conversation that Noel Cardenas brought to me years ago and said, we have a disproportionate number of these students who are going to frequenting the ER. It's not a great place for kids, and it's not the right approach for them to receive healthcare. Couldn't we think of something better? So, and, and the other thing that I would just say, when you see this slide, you might be surprised by this, but over the last, since 2016, UMBLE ISD has increased in free and reduced lunch students by about 20%. So we have a different population than we had in 2016. And we are committed to meeting the needs of each and every one of them.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Fagan. Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I had asked you earlier this week for that exact information, because I think it's important for people to see that. Any other discussion? I just want to make a few quick comments, I haven't talked yet, which is... I will, I will just want to say this, I've, I've done my due diligence on this matter, and I know how I vote on this will make some people happy and think, oh, yeah, he's, he's smart, and there'll be lots of other people who will be very unhappy, and they'll say he's not very smart at all. And that's okay, because at the end of the day, and I've told this to people all the time in my, I guess, 11 years total of board service, I want to always try to do what I believe, based on my analysis, my due diligence, and listening to constituents and seeing things firsthand, what I believe is best for students. And I think I've listened to the arguments, I responded to many people today in an email, and I wasn't trying to win any minds over, I didn't think I would, but I just wanted people to understand what some of the facts were, because I think there was some misinformation as well. Because people were still talking about gender-affirming care, which isn't allowed anyway, but Memorial Hermann, that was not part of what family planning was all about, and was never going to be part of this. And again, this contract is not a forever thing. It's, it comes up each year, and as a matter of fact, and as I told people, we can terminate it, and so can they, with 30 days' notice. And as far as the costs go, I mean, the only out-of-pocket to us, and Mr. Beatty did a very good job, because it's not very easy to estimate some of those costs, but him and his team did a really good job of giving us a good feel for what it would cost on an annual basis for utilities, transportation, and that's the biggest chunk of that, is bringing some of the elementary kids from the other campuses, utilities and security, things like that. And it was about $40,000 a year. So that's our out-of-pocket on this. As far as the staff, equipment, that's all being funded initially through the $4 million grant by the Memorial Hermann, I'm sorry, it's called the Hospital Authority, Dr. Brown, Hospital Authority Board, right? Okay, and then after that runs out, Memorial Hermann's found a community-based, there's a special name for it, but they will take over the cost of it. Assuming we were still in business with them four years from now, and we may be, and we may be not. So that, that's one thing where, and it'll be incumbent upon us to ask questions, and they're supposed to provide reporting each year to, in terms of what, this is what the contract states and what the state law requires. So I'm, I'm comfortable on those things. I'm comfortable mostly because I was able, the reason I was hesitant initially, I was able to really get a good sense now of the parent control, parent guardian control. And that, and we've also agreed that we will not send that form out for opting into the program with all the rest of the back-to-school forms. We'll do that separately to those campuses, it's, it's a limited group. And that way, those parents guardians will see it, it won't be just buried in a trove of, I gotta sign everything that's put in front of me. So we want to make sure it's, it's very deliberative. And if people don't send it back, or don't, unfortunately, we won't be able to, to care for those students if they were to want to come to the, come to the clinic. But appointments will be, work with the nurse, except for the times when school is out of session, and then Memorial Hermann is gonna have to work directly to the parent, but these appointments would be set up. I'm not concerned about students under 18 setting an appointment for contraceptive products and whatnot without their parents knowing about it. I think there's good restrictions in place for that, so I'm comfortable with those things. So I, I'm not in favor of terminating the contract, and for those very reasons. And like I said, people can agree or not agree, and that's, that's okay, I'm, that's fine by me. I, I really appreciate that we had people here, because I, I don't care whether what they say agrees with me, disagrees with me, or anybody else up here, the fact that people are engaged, that's the most important thing, that there is dialogue, there is discussion. Sometimes, of course, things get said that aren't really true, and I would encourage people to read some of the attachments I asked Dr. Fagan to have included with this item that's coming up next about whether or not we move, if, if this passes, then the next item would be to, to discuss whether or not we'll start it on a temporary basis. So with that, I will stop if there is no other discussion, I am with this, there is a motion and a second. I am gonna, and again, Mrs. Martin, would you just read that motion back? I think it simply states to terminate the contract with Memorial Hermann, but just... Oh, all right, I'll...
I kinda need to clarify, I need to clarify, are we using the same Chris Parker and Mr. Grabowski as the first and the second?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, the motion on the table was made by Ms. Parker and seconded by Mr. Grabowski, and that is the motion that you're about to read that is about to be voted on when discussion is over.
Okay, thank you. The motion is, I move to terminate the Memorial Hermann contract.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, it, the motion fails four, two, five, two, or, yeah, however, whichever way you want to say it. Okay, so moving on, the next item in our action agenda is the motion that we had last month. We held the public, public hearing, and so now, Mr. Sitten, would you read the motion that we are asked to consider now?
And, and just for clarification, I don't believe a board member has made a motion. I think just semantically, we're talking about the agenda item.
I'm sorry.
That you're being asked to consider.
We are, the agenda item to, to be considered. As our Parliament Attorney, Mr. Sitten, would you make a motion in terms of what's being asked in this agenda item regarding starting the clinic temporary, in a temporary space?
Okay, so I think the easiest way to do is read the public comment, and then, then we make the motion to approve?
That's right, you can read the agenda item, and if there is a board member who wants to make a motion to approve, they will do that, if there's a board member who wants to make a different motion after hearing the agenda item, that, that can be done as well.
Okay, so the, the comments in, the public comments on the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding a school-based health clinic to be operated by Memorial Hermann at the UMBLE High School complex. Public hearing regarding the school-based health clinic to be operated by Memorial Hermann occurred at the board meeting on September 12, 2023. Discussion of possible action was tabled at that time. So at this point in time, Mr. President, I would move that we would approve the Memorial Hermann clinic on the UMBLE High School complex.
Second.
Second, discussion? No discussion? Okay, all those in favor of beginning the wellness clinic in temporary space on the UMBLE, UMBLE High School campus as the motion states? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion passes five to two. Please, let's, we're very good with decorum thus far, so let's, let's stay there. Okay, next on the agenda is Portrait of a Graduate. And again, this item, I'll pretty much have to go through that same language. This, this item was also tabled at the last meeting, as the evening was getting late, I believe. So what we have to do first is I will ask for a motion to take it off the table. This is the item on Portrait of a Graduate update.
I move to take this...
I move to take this item, take the item Portrait of a Graduate off the table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of taking this item off the table? Okay. So, I'm sorry? No, taking it off the table. Okay. So it's off the table, so the motion is back, and this motion, in terms of public comment, will need a motion to begin, but it's basically to, the Portrait of a Graduate was initiated by the Dream Team comprised of over 80 students, teachers, parents, community members. Over the course of 2016, 17, the group collaborated to determine the contemporary skills a student graduating, graduating from UMBLE ISD should embody and exemplify. And they ended up coming to the board with a process and, and what that should look like in terms of competencies. And so now, given the fact that this was done in the 2016, 17 school year, and then initiated following that, it's, six years have, have passed, and the request or, or suggestion is, should we, at this point in time, take a look at Portrait of a Graduate? Do we need to, to use a metaphor or analogy from software, do we need to look at a version 2.0? Is this what the community still wants in terms of parents, community members, business owners, nonprofit leaders, for-profit leaders, and whether or not we should convene another community effort to look at things in light of how education has changed? So that's, that is what this motion, or this item on the agenda is about. So would anyone like to make a motion regarding this? I need a motion before we can have any discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the Portrait of a Graduate update.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Okay. Then we will open discussion on this item as the motion Mr. Holmes has presented. Who would like to go? Mr., okay, Mr. Sitten?
Just kind of a little clarification. Yeah, education's changed a lot, but has the, the things that students need to be successful beyond high school, has that changed from the ideas behind Portrait of a Graduate? So I guess the question I have, or are we looking at what Portrait of a Graduate is, and the process that that went through? Or are we looking at, do we want to change the way we educate kids? It's two totally different things, in my opinion. Are we going to teach to the test, for instance? Or are we going to teach the whole child? Or are we going to look at the different aspects of Portrait of a Graduate independently, and how each one brings the total child, the whole child, together when they graduate and leave UMBLE ISD? Whether they go to college, whether they have a trade, whether they have, go into the military, et cetera? Have those needs changed over time? I kind of would argue no. Now, has there been learning loss with COVID? Has, have we looked at online learning? Have we looked at outdoor collaborative spaces? Have we looked at the way we actually teach over that period of time? Oh, absolutely, we have, for sure. So I guess, I guess I just need a little clarification of what, what we're looking at. Are we looking at a review and, and a tweak? Or are we looking at disbanding and starting over? And what are we focused on? That, I'm just, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Okay. Mr. Holmes, you want to go first?
Sure. I know, I think it goes back to what Dr. Fagan, you said at the end of us discussing the Memorial Hermann Clinic. I think it was that, you know, what is it? We have a different population than in 2016. We've had advances in teaching methodologies. We have a new crop of parents. We have a new crop of students. And I think, Robert, I don't want to redefine what we did with Portrait of a Graduate, because I think if you look at global citizen, a communicator, personally responsible, creative innovator, leader and collabor, leader and collaborator, and a critical thinker, those are the core, I think, tenets of a, of a leader, right? So I don't want to go away from that. I was just thinking that we could look at it, and from, from the perspective of just getting some fresh eyes on it again, with, again, some new parents, some new insight, and I, I can't even say it probably more eloquently than Dr. Fagan did, because she, she, she accommodated me when I wanted to discuss this a few months back. Dr. Fagan, can you, you do it, you said it so well, but you got what I was trying to state. I didn't, I was not trying to dishonor all the work that had been put in by these 80 students, teachers, and parents. I just wanted to build off of it.
Well, Portrait of a Graduate was done to really ask the UMBLE ISD community what it was that they wanted us to focus on, and the message that we received was that, yes, of course, everybody wants reading and math and writing, those are all absolutely central and heavily tested, and, but their message was about the fact that, to be successful in the world, you know, these are, these are the skills that you need. As a, as a productive citizen, you need these skills, and that. We used to think that these were kind of personality traits. I remember as a young teacher, I'd think, oh, you know, Terry's so creative, you know? But since that time, we've really learned that they're not personality traits, they're actually teachable skills, that you can deconstruct them and actually improve a person's ability to do each and every one of them. Now, that doesn't mean I'm ever going to be as creative as, as maybe somebody else, but I can improve in my creativity. And that, one of the things that was really clear during Portrait of a Graduate, and this was a very, I want to remember, remind the board, Martina could speak to this, because she was on the committee, but this was a very arduous process. It was long, it involved a lot of people, we had a, a outside facilitator, so that there was no one from the district, like, influencing the outcome, and it was, it was a big investment, a lot like doing a citizens' bond advisory committee is. It's something that we plan months in advance, and so, like, you know, this is something we planned for the fall, and get it all organized and ready to go, and those kind of things. But the business leaders in there, they would, and we probably have it somewhere, but they would write down these skills and say, this is what I want in the kids that I'm hiring that they don't have. You know, I, I get all day long, I get these applicants, and they have As, but they want me to tell them every single thing to do. You know, they're, they don't want to take risks, they don't want to, you think outside the box, they don't want to problem solve, they want, they're like, they're used to an American education system where I have the right answers, you give them back to me, you get an A. And there, so they really wanted to emphasize that they wanted students who were great communicators, who could work together on teams, that they were collaborators, responsible, creative innovators, back to that creativity piece, critical thinkers, and they didn't feel that these things were emphasized by the star, and therefore, we're getting, sort of dropping through the cracks as teachable skills, that we could better prepare our students. So that was the emphasis of this committee, and the students too. And so, you know, we really wanted to, and, and basically, the way they would say it is, we want to make sure it's a whole-child system that values orchestra, and football, and all the CTE programs, and every single thing that's available to a student, and not just focus on standardized testing. So that was, that was the, the crux of what happened as a result of this. Certainly, COVID was different. Mental health has had a prominent place in education as we emerged from that, that really wasn't there at that time. That's the one dynamic that I think is, is potentially different, is one's ability to understand how to keep themselves healthy and well mentally and emotionally. So in any case, we didn't, you know, as a staff, as a cabinet, we've talked about this, and redoing the whole process, I suspect we would come up with a lot of the same soft skills, if you will, from our business community and, and those folks. Beyond that, I, I'm not really sure if what you all are looking for is something that's more of survey data. That's, that's just a conversation we had, is if we want to, you know, talk about surveys, if we want to revisit this and, and make a, a sort of grand plan to re-engage in this conversation about what are the skills all students need to be successful in their lives, and what does our community want us to focus on? So we're open, but I just want to make sure that we really understand what the goal is and what the mission is.
Ms. Laun-Dixon?
Yes, I did serve on Portrait of a Graduate back in 2016. But one thing I think is a misconception in the discussion is that, yes, we are teaching reading and math and all of those things. This is actually, in my opinion, separate from that. And to me, that was the, the climate in that discussion. And since the committee had 80 people, and it was made up of parents, community leaders, students, administrators, but to me, the most important component of that was the corporate leadership in the room and the business community. Because exactly what Dr. Fagan is saying, they were, when we were talking about Portrait of a Graduate, we were not talking about removing the academics. This is not, these are two separate concepts. This concept is to say, in addition to that, when a student graduates from UMBLE ISD, do we want them to be able to be personally responsible? Do we want them to be a communicator? And do we want to make an effort to make sure those things happen in the process of teaching math and reading and all of those other things, and those other areas? And, and actually, the business leaders and the corporate leadership in the room, exactly what you just said. I mean, they would say, yes, you're sending us a kid that, you know, is, is making this particular grade, but they can't communicate, you know? Or they can't think as critically as they should and make decisions on demand. So these are the things that we would like to see for them to carry forth. You know, I, I think, you know, you know, I know we all have children here, we're all taxpayers, we do all of these things, we have grandchildren in the district. You know, personally, I feel that my four children benefited from having excellent academics, and also having these as a model as they move forward. You know, just thinking, you know, one of my children is extremely shy, but the fact that we focus on communication, and that she had to do presentations in class that were longer than normal presentations to really get out of that shell, it, it valued her, it was, it's a great value to her in college. And, you know, if you were to ask her today, she would say, I got that from UMBLE, you know, high school. And so, you know, it's disheartening sometimes to hear some of the feedback, you know, I, I look at it very differently. Like I said earlier in my comments, I have kids that went to all different schools in the district. You know, I've had, I have a 504 kid, ADHD kid, I have all kinds of kids in my four, my bunch of four. But to me, they have received an excellent education, and they have all thrived extremely well on the secondary, the next level, and are coming out of that, and they say it's because of their education here. Yes, I do see challenges, you know, but I think the challenges with testing, you know, there are two issues with that. One is COVID. COVID affected all of us greatly. But hey, let's not use that as, you know, something that holds us back, and we're not. We assess our students three times a year to make sure they're growing. We're actually following each individual child to see what direction they're moving in. You know, but on top of that, the state cannot keep moving the bar and then turning around and saying that we're not doing our job. I just recently went to a conference, Plano ISD, Plano High School, I'm sorry, one of the top high schools in the, in the state, in, in Texas, right? What did they stand up and say to Mike Morath? That based on your new standard, we have been a top-rated district, and we are going to be a D because you moved the bar. So let's have real conversations. You know, you're attacking a group of people sometimes, and our superintendent, we are trying to move this district in a certain direction. And so, you know, I don't want to, you know, be on a soapbox here, but I do want to say, this was a lot of really good work that was done, and it should not be negated, and I don't think we need to redo it. If we want to look at things that need to be improved, it is the test score area, and let's focus on that. That has, that's separate from Portrait of the Graduate, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I, one of the things I, I would like to see is, and Mr. Sitten asked this question, I guess I would like to know and get confirmation that, yes, these are still the competencies that the community wants, and we might be able to do that in a survey format to just make sure that, yeah, people still want, those are the things we need to be looking at, and, and that we target the surveys to business owners, business executives, as well as, you know, in the not-for-profit world, and then also parents, community members, all, all people at large, and just make it a wide, if that's what we want to do. Or do you, you know, whole day invite people to come and, and talk about it? So I would just like to get confirmation that, yeah, that's, we're still, these are the, the other skills that, that we want to see. And then I guess the thing that I don't see from what we have right now is, how do we measure if we're being successful? If we're, if we're saying these are important, and I think most of them are important for students to have, how do we know we've been successful by the time they are leaving? That they have become critical thinkers, leaders, collaborators, and, you know, the list goes on? So I guess that's one thing I see missing in that, is, you know, how do we measure that? And then the last thing is, a lot of times, you know, we do things, and it falls on the backs of our campus teachers. So I, I would want us to be cognizant of how, you know, what impact this has on teachers in terms of, is it taking away time? Does it enhance what they're doing in terms of their academic curriculum, you know, how that works? Our teachers being, if they're putting time into this, is it part of their evaluation? And then how are they evaluated if we don't have measurements in place for these various competencies indicators, you know, and the targets? I mean, because it looks nice, you know, you read through the list, and it's a lot of great stuff, but how do we know in pri, and by the way, primary elementary, is that K through 3? Okay. I was sure. So how, how we do that? So that, that's what I would like to see, if we were interested in, in doing that. That was my reason, and then Mr. Holmes had also approached me, and I said, yeah, well, that's good, because I've heard Dr. Fagan talk about this at various venues, where he said, oh, yeah, you know, maybe we could take a look at it. So that's what I would like to see us do, and if a majority of the board does not want to see us do that, then that's, that's fine too. But I just thought it was a good point to, in the calendar, to, to bring this up and to see if, in fact, we wanted to do it. So going back to our motion, and Mr. Holmes' motion to, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you didn't, you didn't put your hand up. Go ahead.
Portrait of a Graduate, I agree with what was just said. It doesn't have any metrics, so it, it's hard to know as a student is progressing from kindergarten through 12th grade, just what is being accomplished without a metric. And, you know, and then, a child will learn, I called them personality traits, now they're called useful skills, whatever they are, those 21 or 22. They're going to learn that throughout school without it being in the classroom as part of a classroom activity. For example, a club, a sports team on the playground when you're little, you get knocked down, do you get back up? Do you fight for yourself? School brings a whole lot more of these traits, and so does society, and again, it's parents that are responsible for their personality traits a lot also. But this is how it affects, in my opinion, Portrait of a Graduate has a negative effect on school. My bride and I were eating lunch at Tin Roof Barbecue, and a teacher came up to me and said, are you Mike Grabowski? And I said, I am. She said, can I talk to you for a few minutes about the school? And I said, sure. And this happens to all of us. She goes, you know, I am one heck of a geometry teacher at one time. She goes, you know, I am one heck of a geometry teacher at one time. I was one heck of a geometry teacher at one time. She didn't use the word heck. And I go, what happened? She goes, I decided to retire early. I was in high school. I used to teach five periods, then they made it six. And when enough substitutes weren't around, they made it seven. She goes, and then they started putting all this stuff into the schools, classroom activities that I had to cover. She didn't word to use stuff, that's my word. She mentioned Portrait of a Graduate, social emotional learning and all these other issues that are now part of what a teacher has to cover, you know? And you go to the elementary schools and they call it circle time. We didn't have that. We concentrated when we went into math, from when it started to when it ended. And that was this teacher's point. I can teach these kids geometry, but the district has only given me 30 of my 50 minutes to do it every day. And then when they take a period away from me, I can't tutor. Not the ones that just want to pass, I can't tutor the ones that want to excel either. I can't email, I can't contact the parents, I can't, I can't, I can't. And I had enough, so I retired early. I'm not saying there's not value in Portrait of a Graduate, there is. But it shouldn't be in the classroom. I don't know the answer to that. I know I'm given a problem without an answer, which I try to never do to my boss, always try to give him a solution. But maybe it goes online, maybe it does some other venue. But we need to allow teachers to get rid of this innovative style of teaching that has given them nothing but less time to teach over the years. They just want to teach teacs and they're darn good at it. We have 3,200 amazing teachers. Let them teach. So there's a place for it, but it's not in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Ms. Parker?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Mr. Holmes. I think that we need to keep the work, look at the work. It was a lot of hours and a lot of effort by the community, but just let's look at it in a post-COVID world and look at the job skills. I mean, look at Prisms, look at the technology changes that have happened in the past few years, but I don't think it hurts to look at it.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Dr. Fagan?
I just wanted to add one thing for clarity. So I agree with you completely that teachers have, are way overburdened, which is why we try really hard not to add things. Portrait of a Graduate is not a mandate. It is, that's part of the reason why there's no assessment data, because we have never mandated it. There's, it's been simply a cultural piece about recognizing that we can teach kids whenever the teachable moment arises to do some of these things and it will give them an opportunity to be more successful in their futures, according to most business and industry. And so I don't think that, I know of any high school teacher who is required to do Portrait of a Graduate or social emotional lessons ever, at least not while I've been here. And so, in the year that the one planning period was reduced was before me, but that was a budget cut year, 2011, I believe. There was a major budget cut in UML ISD where pink slips were given out. And part of being able to save a lot of people's jobs was that balancing between the pink slips and the, cutting the additional prep period. So nobody here wants that, but that's just a function of the financial situation in the state of Texas that doesn't fund teachers to only teach that many periods in a day. It's not something we want at all. And it's also the reason that when the state came out with their heavy-handed reading academies and put a tremendous burden on our elementary teachers, our CNI department worked really hard to make that integrate with work that they were already doing in best practices so that it wasn't another thing. You know, we really work hard to make sure that even special education is integrated with everything else. So it, you know, when I was a teacher, I used to think to myself, does the left hand and the right ever talk to each other? Because these guys are asking me to do this and these guys are asking me to do this and it's like the opposite. So we try really hard never to do those things. And we're open to feedback. When people say, that's a stupid idea, we're like, okay, we can, you know, we'll rethink that. There's nobody here that goes out and says, oh, I have this really great idea and you're all going to do it. I mean, that's just not, that's just not who this team is at all. But the state of Texas does give us some things we have to do. We never mandated Portrait of a Graduate, ever, anywhere. They did develop rubrics, it is measurable. Mr. Scarfo actually has them all printed here and he does. And so teachers can measure it, they can give students feedback on Portrait of a Graduate if they choose to, if there's a teachable unit where it makes sense, but they're not required to at all. These are not things that we've ever forced. So, you know, we do, we do work really hard to make sure we're delivering high-quality instruction to every single student, differentiated and personalized for their needs. And that's a heavy enough lift right there to do those kind of things and make sure that we're meeting the needs of all the students. So I completely agree with you. We're not a one more thing group. We really try to keep things lean and appropriate and best interest of students and teachers. And I think the fact that we've started the year, the last couple of years, with 98% of our teaching positions filled is a testament to the fact that, you know, the rumor mill is out there among teachers. I mean, it's a buyer's market for them, they can go where they want to go and they're coming here. And so we feel good about that. Those are the kind of metrics we use to measure our success and we want to continue to do that. We meet with our teacher advisories every month and they give us the hard facts. And I agree with you on substitutes too. We got, we got the talking to on substitutes for years, but Rick was doing everything he could under the sun to get substitutes. He was, you know, bonuses for serving so many days in a row, the highest sub rate in anywhere around, right? We even reduced some of our requirements so that we could have more subs. We don't want to ask our teachers to sub for each other. But, and then the other thing we've done is put tremendous incentives in place for attendance to incentivize teachers to come to work so that they don't have to cover for their colleagues. So we absolutely agree. We want every empty classroom covered by a high-quality teacher every single day, but when we don't have that, we have no choice but to help each other out. And so that did used to happen and during COVID, our sub went, I mean, nobody wanted to sub because they were afraid of COVID. So we're climbing back out of that again, right, Rick? And then if our principals quit hiring all of our subs as teachers, I'm kidding, that would help us out too, because 10 steps forward, three steps back. But we're working really hard on all those issues because we want to deliver the highest quality of life experience for every single teacher in UML ISD because we know that just makes everything better for students. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And it's a good thing we weren't taking a test because you were saying you were cheating. You were looking at my paper.
I was absolutely borrowing your paper. I was impressed that you had all those rubrics printed out. That was very good.
And I had notes too on them.
I know. So we want to measure them, it's just, we don't want to give teachers one more thing.
Exactly. Okay. So what we have, the motion we have on the table is that we consider that we look at Portrait of a Graduate update. We haven't really defined exactly what that should include and maybe we might need to have some more discussion about that. If we, if the board right now does say, yeah, let's go ahead and start thinking about this and we can have some further discussions about where we go. Is the community still in the same place? Has it moved? What are they thinking now? So that is the motion on the table. It's been seconded. So all those in favor of an update to Portrait of a Graduate? All those opposed? Two. All right, so it passes five to two. So we will have more discussion, Dr. Fagan, with you to, because this isn't an overnight thing.
No.
Yeah, no, exactly. That's fine. Okay? Just everybody understands. Okay. All right, so next we have, we're almost in the home stretch here. Information items. It'll finally feel comfortable to me. Yeah. All right, so. Yeah. That's right. Okay. So next, well, they may just want to leave us their presentation informed, we can understand, we won't be insulted. Okay. Next is our serious matter, our Intruder Detection Audit Report. Mr. Perkins, do you have a report for us?
I do, Mr. Scarfo. The Texas School Safety Center conducted an Intruder Detection Audit pursuant to updated legal requirements. Five schools were reviewed since our last board meeting and there were no findings.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. That's encouraging to hear. Okay. And next is, and again, I'll do it this way, updates, board and associations and committees, rather than read everything out, please indicate to me if you would like to do an update of a committee report. Mr. Sitton, your?
Yeah, just real quick, from building and planning, y'all should have received the minutes from our last meeting. The multipurpose rooms are still moving forward. We've got a couple more that have occupancy, a few more that are close to getting occupancy. We just have a few, a few little speed bumps there, but those are all moving forward. So you, we had a few real estate items that we discussed, but you've gotten all the notes.
Thank you, Mr. Sitton. Well, yeah, it's, well, no, that's slow, so it's almost 10. So it's 9:59, 10 on the nose. There you go. I was going to ask the gentleman who got the award, I forgot his name now off the top of my head, see if I can invite him out to lunch and try to convince him to keep this room warmer in the future. A little bribe, but no. Okay. Any other committees? Ms. Parker, obviously, nothing? Okay. We know they're in their second special session. Okay. Next is, next on the agenda is the report on emergent bilingual students in UML ISD. Everyone received that report. Are there any questions for Dr. Fagan or staff regarding it? I would just say we continue to grow with the number of languages.
Yes, we do.
The public ought to look at that. It's pretty eye-opening. Okay. Next. Okay. Greg, it's your turn, Mr. East. If you want, you guys are troopers. So our next item is a report on delinquent tax collections for the period July 1st, 22 through June 30th, 2023. Mr. East and Ms. Valdez, thank you very much.
Thank you. Press that button.
Thank you very much for having us. We're going to be as fast as we possibly can because I know everybody is tired and hopefully...
Well, Donnie, which took 20 minutes.
So I won't read the 2022 tax calendar, but it is here for you to look at. If you have any questions on this, you can always ask us. This is my favorite slide and so I'm going to take just a minute to highlight a couple of things on this. This shows you the base tax for 2022 and what it really highlights is that the fantastic tax office run by Ms. Jones and her staff collects over 98% of the taxes before those are turned over to us. Great job, Melody. What we are left with is just 1.7% of the taxes, so it's a very small amount. The bulk of the work is done by the tax office. This slide will just highlight collection over the past seven years and really you'll see it's the same thing. The tax office is consistently collecting over 98% with just a small percent turned over to us for collection. There's not much change in that data over the years. I'm going to turn it over to Greg East for the rest of the report. Thank you all for having us. We really appreciate being here. We actually enjoy these meetings. Maybe not when they go to 10, but we enjoy hearing what is going on in our community and seeing how active everybody is.
It's starting to make me nervous there, I was going to get rid of the hook. This graph shows how much has been turned over to us. See, this year, most recent year is on the right. You see, there's a pretty big increase from the prior year. I don't think it's anything unusual, it's just that your basic levy went up by a whole lot last year, almost, I think, $19 million, so not surprising that what got turned over to us went up quite a bit. And this is showing what we collected in the last period ending in June. We take over in July for that year, work on it for 12 months. You show through June, we collected 69.6% of the 2021 base tax. And those accounts that we collected, that got deleted and just resolved. So that's basically our goal, is 70% every year. And we think if we just do that consistently, then basically you will never have a delinquent tax problem because every year you get almost everything collected in the first 12 months. And then this shows just their current year that we took over in July. So the big chunk is just accounts we're actively working on now. We sent out demand letters in July and our call centers are working, calling on those accounts. We'll contact lien holders. We'll talk to taxpayers as they call back. We'll try to make payment agreements. If they have issues with the appraisal district, we try to get them to go to the appraisal district as quick as they can to get those resolved. And see, other than that, nothing really unusual. 8% of your role are tax deferrals. If you're overseas to five or disabled, you can apply for a deferral. The tax is still due, it's still delinquent, but the interest rate is less than normal. It's 5% instead of 12. And basically it means we don't work on that count and just someday when it's no longer your homestead, you have to pay the tax, but it saves us. If you don't want to pay, then you don't have to, you apply for a deferral. And then you see the about 458,000 litigation and 114,000 bad addresses. We just, litigation, we just work and push through the court system as we can. Some cases go quick and some cases don't go quick. And it just depends on how that goes, how long it takes us to get defendant served, when the cases get set and that kind of thing. But really, that's not an unusual number and basically everything's, court system's working fine. In Harris County, we're still doing all, almost every court's doing hearings on Zoom and has been since the pandemic started. So now the younger lawyers are used to that, I think that's how you do court. It's working well enough and so far we haven't heard they will be back in person anytime soon, but we're getting the cases set and we're getting pushed through, so it's fine. And this is just how much is due for each year. Even though in the first few months after we take over our tax year, we concentrate a lot on accounts that, oh, just that year, then we start working on the older accounts, so we keep on collecting those. So you see on the left is the 2022 tax year, I guess it's pink, I'm not sure. And then 21 is quite a bit less and then you see it'll just get smaller and smaller as time goes on. And really, everything's progressing nicely. Your taxpayers are responding well and your tax office is a huge help to us. We, me and our legal assistants especially bug them a lot, but Melody never complains, which I appreciate, but they are a huge help to us. We would not be able to get this done without them. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir. Any from the board table? Okay. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
And I just want to also say, I know we don't, fortunately, don't give you a lot of business, which is a good thing for us, not so much for you, but I just want to still say though, over the years, you guys have been such great partners on the other side for us. I don't mean the vendor relationship, but on the other side of that, how much you guys consistently, year after year, give back to our community, to our district, always supporting the events that we have. You're always there with sponsorships and all those things. So I just want to, our hats off to you guys for that because not everybody does and not all our vendors do and not that anybody has to, but it's just really great. And just want to acknowledge what you guys do for us as a community as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy. Now, we will move on to the last part of our meeting. Item A, consideration of topics for future board business. Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I don't know, maybe a special meeting, I'm not sure, but I would like to have a discussion on the legal representation for the board.
Who would want to see that as an item on an agenda?
Have a discussion on the legal representation for the board or an action item on, yeah.
Okay. Who would want to do that? I need to see hands so I can take a count. One, two. Who would like to see us have as an item on an agenda, discussion of outside legal counsel?
Yes.
At the next, well, she didn't...
I didn't specify. I would prefer an earlier meeting, but we have breakfast with the board coming up, it could be a variety of things, but I won't specify that. I just want to have the discussion about legal representation for the board.
Okay. Okay, so outside.
Yes, outside, I'm sorry. Not to make anyone nervous. Sorry. Thank you.
So I got one, two, three. Raise your hand up, yes?
The next one?
Well, it's unspecified. It's just, she'd like to see that as a... It's just, she'd like to see that as an item, an agenda item. Yeah, we can't get into a discussion about it, but, okay. I just need an answer, right? Yes. I mean, do you want to have it on the agenda as an item?
It looks like even if I vote, it doesn't matter.
Well, I saw one, two, three hands up saying they wanted it to be...
I'd rather it just be crystal clear when it's going to be.
Well, I would prefer it to be at breakfast with the board on the 24th.
And it's just a discussion?
Yes.
I thought you said discussion and action item.
Discussion.
I'll discuss it, but not any, take any action.
Discussion.
Okay. So the item you'd want on the agenda is a discussion of outside counsel. So I've got one, if I...
At breakfast with the board.
One, two, three. Mr. Kurt Chopper, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So four. Okay. So four, that's all that's needed to do that. All right. Any other items for future board business? Okay, well, seeing none, then we can move to item B, adjournment. At 10:08. Okay.
That's better than I would have...